Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Thank you for attending this evening. We'll have a roll call by our city clerk Kathy Valdez.
The records show a flag that all members are present.
Okay, if you'll all rise, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Councilmember Contreras.
Ready? Begin.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yesterday was Memorial Day, and this evening I'd like to begin by honoring and remembering our veterans, especially those who've made the ultimate sacrifice while serving our country. We honor every man and every woman who responded to the call of duty and gave their life to protect our way of life. We also honor these heroes' memories, and we pay tribute to their families. Let us also acknowledge the men and women who serve our country around the world and here in the United States promoting freedom and democracy and fighting terrorism. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And a little reminder about decorum. I'd like to remind everybody that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow the public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. A clause is appropriate for meetings listed under the "Presentation" portion of the agenda only. Attendees should remain seated during the meeting, and persons needing to stand are requested to step outside the city council chambers where video and audio of the meeting are playing. This is also listed on our Agenda cover sheet. The students that are here that are wishing to receive a credit for attending this evening's meeting must stay for a minimum of one hour. However, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. When you're ready to leave, you may ask one of the sheriff's deputies or a staff member in the back of the room to sign your paper. To speak for three minutes on an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you want to speak on and give it to the city clerk secretary, which is right down here. Speaker slips are available just outside the council chambers. And so the next thing on our agenda is the approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes or additions to this agenda.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda is our presentations, and we have four presentations this evening. And so I'm going to ask my council to join me for the first two. The first one is the presentation of certificates to the graduates of the Spring 2019 Vista Leadership Academy. And the second thing we'll be doing is a presentation of certificates of appreciation for outgoing commissioners. So if my council will join me down below, we will go down there and take care of that business. Okay, so the city of Vista is proud to present its 20th Vista Leadership Academy's graduating class. This academy provides insight to Vista residents on the city's operations and its many responsibilities and functions. Our first academy, conducted in 2007, was an overwhelming success, and every leadership academy has grown since then. Congratulations to the Spring 2019 participants. Please come up as I call your name to receive your certificate. Actually, they already have their certificates. We gave them to them a little earlier, and they're going to remain standing up here so we can take a group photo. So I'm going to call them each up there. So if they'll just come up and stand here, and then we'll do a group photo. So first, Daniel Alvarado, Jim Corcoran, Alita Deardo, Melanie Erickson, Larry Garner, Erin Gobitis, Victor Heeman, Toby Luna, Krista Mays, Stephanie Mitchell, Tara Moore, Devin Parker, Brad Petrcek, Scott Rippon, Pia Romano, Eugene Schweitzer, Susan Tully, and Mary Winters. They all come up here for your group photo. And the next thing, we're going to recognize some of our certificates of appreciation. And first, I want to recognize Jeff Guyer, Vista Unified School District Safety and Environmental Manager. Is he here? Is Jeff here? Come on down, Jeff. I want to recognize him for his -- he represents the Vista Unified School District for Safety and Environmental Manager for his service on the Community Safety and Traffic Commissions. Jeff has served on the Community Safety Commission since July 1, 2013. On March 23, 2016, he was also appointed to the Traffic Commission. Jeff has been a great community partner, and staff are very appreciative of everything he's done to support the safety of Vista's youth. So we congratulate Jeff on his retirement and wish him the very best. So congratulations to Jeff. I have two certificates for you.
Thank you.
We've got a photo opportunity here. Oh, God, Harry. Somebody. Okay, and I'm going to need -- somebody can help me with these. Where's my deputy mayor? This is Deputy Mayor John Franklin. So they're -- I think they're stapled together because they represent two things. Okay, so the remaining certificates of appreciation are being presented to students that served as youth commissioners with their terms ending on June 30. So first, we have our Community Safety Commission. And when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. Adira Rodriguez, is Adira here, Rodriguez? How about Damaris Tellas? Yeah, she also was a member of the safety there, the -- what was it, the junior deputy at the academy? Yeah, she graduated from there, too. So congratulations to you. Yes, stay up here. We'll do -- should we do individual pictures, or -- yeah? Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah. Yes, please. Okay. See if you have a sheriff one. Once I turn 18. Okay. And now our Planning Commission, Grace Elm. Grace Elm, is she here? Let's see, Grace. How about Jesse Van Hay? Jesse here? Nope? Okay, we'll have to save their certificates. Serving on our Public Arts Commission, Hannah Tremaine. No Hannah? Hmm. And finally, the youth -- they're probably taking tests or something. And finally, the Youth Advisory Commission, Amelia Dean and Catherine Bream. Not here either. Well, those -- they were our youth that served on the different commissions that we had, and so they -- and a lot of them are graduating, so it's probably is a busy time in their lives. So anyway, congratulations to them. And then with that, we will go up, and then I have -- thank you. We have two more. The next one, I'd like to invite Amy Loffenberg, Marketing Consultant for the Delmar Fairgrounds, to come forward to provide us with a presentation about the 2019 San Diego Fair, which is coming right up. Right here in the microphone. Turn it towards you. Yeah, I had it turned around there, so make sure it's --
Okay, is that good?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Well, my name is Amy. Thank you so much for having me today.
Talk right into it, so I can hear you real good.
Gotcha, okay. I'm a very proud native of San Diego, and I'm here to share highlights of this year's San Diego County Fair with you. Our theme this year is the Wizard of Oz. So come on down the Yellow Brick Road with me, and let's explore the fair.
There's absolutely no place like the San Diego County Fair. Join Dorothy and her famous friends for a most magical and amazing adventure, May 31 through July 4. We all heart the San Diego County Fair.
So the fair runs from May 31 through July 4 this year, so starting this Friday at 4:00 p.m. And everything is totally awesome this year. So the fair actually is involved in the community all year round. And this is a slide about our banner program, which I know Vista is a participant in, so that's fantastic, totally awesome. We're in 23 communities, and you'll see our banners everywhere. We have nearly 1,000 banners. We love connecting with our youth, and we have various programs for school-aged children. Our Plant, Grow, Eat program, we go into schools and teach children how to grow their own yummy veggies, so they get to watch them grow and then eat them later. So back to the fairgrounds, we have a fabulous lineup of festivals this year. Our Toaster of the Coast Wine Competition and Festival is on June 8. San Diego International Beer Festival, an entire weekend of beer from June 14 through 16. And the Spirit and Cocktail Festival on June 22. Oh, and don't forget to find our hidden speakeasy for some sneaky, tiki cocktails. Our Asian and Pacific Islander Festival is going to be amazing, and that will be on June 15. It will feature cultural food, entertainment, and martial arts. And our Out at the Fair Festival on June 1 is an awesome celebration of our LGBTQ+ community. And grandstand concert lineup, we have Mr. Worldwide himself, Pitbull. Oh, yeah. We have Toby Keith, Smokey Robinson, love Smokey, and Lindsey Stirling, and many, many more concerts. So what would the fair be without the food? So this year, we are featuring Cardiff Crack Sliders, Yellow Brick Fudge, Blizzard of Oz Frozen Hot Chocolate, Flying Monkey Caramel Corn, deep-fried Monte Cristo sandwiches, and deep-fried creme brulee to top it all off. And of course, we put the fun in food. Well, thank you so much for skipping down the Yellow Brick Road with me for a while. You've been awesome, and I look forward to seeing you all at this year's San Diego County Fair.
Hey, you guys, I found another book about the wonderful Wizard of Oz. Look, said Dorothy, 'Tis the most magical place where all may weary and wonders await.
And so began an amazing adventure. The scarecrow looks smart. The lion feels brave. And the tin woodsman has found his heart, which is like totally awesome. Get the best pass ever for an awesome time. Available online, at the box office, or in-store at Albertson's &amp; Vons. There's no place like the San Diego County Fair.
Thank you. Thank you, Vista.
Thank you. Councilmember Rigby had something to say.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it Amy? Yes. Amy brought up a minute ago about the banner program and that we're one of the cities that participates. When you're driving around town and you see the banners on the light poles, stop and take a look if you can, because those are our Vista kids on those light poles. You might see somebody that you recognize.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate that you do that for our communities. It's really awesome to see our little kids up there. It's just a very community-feeling thing, and I appreciate you for doing that.
Thank you so much. We just love connecting with every community. We love San Diego.
Good job.
Thank you, Amy. Our next speaker, our next presentation will be with our Fire Department, an update by Fire Chief Jeff Hahn.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. That's going to be a hard act to follow with the Yellow Brick Road and Flying Monkey Caramel Corn, but I'm going to do my best. I have your biannual update for the Fire Department to present to you tonight. Taking a look at our statistics in total, last time we met, I only had half a year's data, so I have all of the data for 2018. Our totals look like this. Total fires, 296. Fire loss, 1.6 million, and saved, 20.583 million in property value saved in direct threat from those fires. In terms of call load, our total EMS calls were about 10,169, and our total calls last in 2018, last year, were 14,791. Some other things that we're involved in is zone promotional testing. I'm quite proud of this area. We've been working for years to try to get together with our zone partners, our fire departments that surround us, and do the promotional testing together to improve all of our processes. And so we've accomplished that. We've done tests for fire engineer, fire captain, and now in June, we have a test scheduled for battalion chief. I got to give a shout-out to a couple of my staff, particularly Battalion Chief Craig Usher and Deputy Chief Mike Easterling, who worked very hard on getting these processes moved forward, as well as our partners in human resources, who have partnered with the other human resources folks around in the other cities that surround us to make this a reality. It's been a great process. The folks who've gone through it appreciate it, and we certainly appreciate the standardization of these tests and the good outcomes that we've had. Looking ahead into what's going to go on in the next year, our strategic plan, our five-year strategic plan is hitting its end, and so we are starting a new five-year strategic plan looking ahead. And so that process is starting. With that comes a new Standards of Cover Report. Both of these will make their way to you. Our Standards of Cover Report, again, is our statistical report card on how the Fire Department is doing, our response times, our coverage, all of those technical matters. And then, looking ahead, although we're starting it now, in the following year will be our reaccreditation, which includes all of these documents and, as you know, much, much more. So we'll be working on those at all levels in the Fire Department. And actually, accreditation will be at all levels in this city, helping us out with that. Last time I was in front of you, we had just put our fourth ambulance in service, and we were talking about, did we put it in the right spot or not? And I said I'd be monitoring that and getting back to you on that. And this chart shows that I believe we are -- we put it in the right place. We've got a fairly even pie distribution, is best we can, anyway, on where we have that ambulance, and some pretty good call distribution there. This chart shows for those four ambulances how the call loading -- our total transports per year is going, sorry, per year on that from 15 through 18. And you'll notice pretty much an increasing trend. Over the course of that, we did have a little fluctuation between 2016 and 2017. Calls actually dropped, about 52 calls in total over the year, which is not statistically significant, but unusual. We usually increase every year. And then, of course, we topped out about 161 calls above all of that in 2018. One new thing that we talked about a little bit last time, and we have got that in place, is our Homeless Outreach Paramedic Program. And that's where we're trying to address your agenda, and outreach to the homeless folks in our community. We've paired a paramedic with the deputies who have a homeless outreach program already. So we're sticking a paramedic with that team to go out and provide information, referrals to services to homeless persons, first aid if it's needed, minor treatment if it's needed. We can start the access to 911 if that's a more significant incidence, and that's needed. You know, minor wound care, nutritional advice, all kinds of things to try to help their situation and help them get to services and potentially get out of that situation. Another thing, another subject that we covered last time that was problematic was the wait times ambulances are stuck at hospitals. We also call that wall time. And as you'll recall, the problem with that is that the longer that our ambulances are waiting with patients to transfer to a hospital bed, then our community is uncovered. And if we stack two, three, or maybe four ambulances at a hospital, then there's -- the coverage to run calls in our community is affected. So I'm very pleased to say that the county of San Diego has taken this seriously. Our local hospital, Tri-City, has taken this seriously and worked together with us and other fire departments in the zone, and we have actually had a very positive impact on this. Part of that is measuring the transfer of care, which is when we take that patient and transfer it to the hospital gurney. And when we mark that time, we're able to statistically measure and then have something we can agree, this is a real thing with the hospital. Our paramedics have done a really good job of being compliant with getting that time mark made by transferring the care and having the nurses sign an electronic tablet that they have. Our compliance is about an average 90.4%. We've had paramedic teams that have consistently averaged 100%. They're really doing it. I mean, it's just one of the thousand things that has to happen on a call, so we're very proud that we're able to pull off compliances that are that high. The outflow of that is, the hospitals have reacted. Tri-City in particular has reacted to shorten those times. And you'll see the median offload time is now down to 17 minutes, which is significantly better than it was when we were talking about this before. The 90% are off in 39 minutes or less, and 30 minutes or less about 82.4% of the time. And you'll recall, we were seeing times two and three hours. So this is really good news, and I'm very proud of the efforts that our paramedics are making as part of this system to keep this going. Also, in emergency medical services, I just, you know, I get a lot of communication when good things happen, and of course, when good things don't happen as well. But I get from the hospitals occasionally some really good stories, and I just wanted to share one with you about, you know, why we're here and the kind of work that our folks are doing out there. And this one, this one came in from Tri-City Hospital, actually. On May 13, 2018, a 39-year-old female was found by her roommate in cardiac arrest. The roommate called 911, received CPR instructions over the phone from our dispatching agency. They stayed with her and gave her instructions, so she was able to perform this well enough over the phone to maintain that patient until Vista Engine 121 and Paramedic Ambulance 121 arrived. On arrival, the crew took over CPR from the roommate, found the patient to be in ventricular fibrillation or cardiac standstill. Patient was treated, medicated, which included defibrillation, and the heart was restarted. Patient was delivered to the hospital with a strong pulse and positive neurologic signs. This patient was discharged from the hospital on May 18 with no residual issues from the event, just five days after her heart had stopped. So this is a great example of how our system works, how our folks work, all the way from the folks who answer the phone when somebody calls 911 for help, all the way through the hospital course and return that person to the community without any deficits. So one of many stories that comes across my desk, it really, really proves our folks are doing it right out there. Another area that we've made some good progress on in the last year is our Area for Emergency Preparedness or Disaster Preparedness. We really have stepped up our commitment and formalized our program for this in the last year. Some of the things that we've gotten done, organized an annual training plan with exercises to plan for, prepare for, respond to, and recover from major emergencies. Community engagement and preparedness, a big part of that, as you know, in disasters, we really need to prepare the community to help themselves and help us help them. Testing and exercise our alerting systems. I know we're going to be hearing a lot more about that and the tragedies that have happened up in Northern California. This is a big component of that, and we'll be hearing more about that as that information comes out from those events. Enhanced ability to respond and assist by updating our Emergency Operations Center capabilities. You'll see a little graphic down there in the corner of our Emergency Operations Center. And through our exercises and drills, and also through our activation with a lilac fire, we're able to really kind of evaluate what worked, what maybe didn't work so well, or what we could do better, and we've made -- we've moved to adjust that and expand those capabilities so we can serve the community better in those times of disaster or major emergency. Part of the training we've done, Web EOC training. Web EOC is the program that connects our EOC with all of the other EOCs in the county and the main EOC in the county. Testing our alert San Diego platform, along with our WEA platform. Those two platforms are the main ways we alert folks right now of major emergencies or disasters that are impending or during those, to get information out. And we're paying particular attention to those, as I said earlier, with some of the things we're going to learn, I believe, from the disasters in Northern California. And then also shelter worker training. We've trained many city staff to be shelter workers in our shelters in Vista here for our residents. Some impacts from our program, following several deadly gas emergencies that happened in the West, in California and other states. There was a bill passed in California, 1650, requiring us to partner with SDG&E on gas and electric emergencies. We've done training with them. We've had some good sessions with them, and that really came into play on March 20, actually, of this year. We had a pretty significant gas leak occur. We were able to quickly respond, get together with SDG&E, evacuate some folks, move some folks around, shelter in place, and mitigate the emergency really efficiently and quickly with that enhanced level of training that we'd just been through and the good communication that we've established with the utility. So that was a real good success story. In addition, with our program, you know, disasters, again, we've talked about gas emergencies, we've talked about fires, there's also earthquakes, flooding. We did have some flooding damage from the atmospheric river, I think we called it, that came through and really dumped a lot of water on us, but it did some damage in Vista, and it incurred some cost. And through this program, we're able to access some of those disaster funds, and looks like we'll be able to cover about $10,000 to offset the costs that we put out to mitigate those effects. So good stuff happening there, too. In the labor management arena, we've been working very hard. The Vista, the fire executive team and labor leaders have been meeting regularly in this Labor Management Alliance, which is a program basically to work together. We've built a strong team, and this year in 2019 have made some real progress in this area that we're very proud of. We've been working hard on a report that I commissioned for the department in our Labor Management Relations. We've been running right down that report, making great progress on those issues that were raised in that report and moving forward. So I'm very proud of how we're working together this year and how things are sorting out. So we're making good headway. And then, the fire season outlook, I'm sure your favorite part. I just came, got this last week, and as usual, we had the leaders up at the San Diego National Weather Service Office come and give us a briefing on weather, and then we had a briefing from those experts in fire behavior prediction on what the fire season's going to look like this year. So I'll give you the straight scoop on what they told me, and then we'll see how this works out, how this plays out this year. But as last year, they continue to see more weather extremes in the nation, and if you watch the news, that's probably not a surprise. Last winter, we started off with the driest continual period of record in San Diego history. And of course, this winter, which was in El Nino, is one of the wettest in recent memory. So we've really taken a big swing there. So normal rainfall in San Diego is about 10.04 inches. This year, we've had 12.73 up just above us on Palomar. Up just above us on Palomar Mountain, 27.07 inches is normal, and they've gotten 40 inches, over 40 inches of rain up there. So very significant rain happening. They're predicting that the temperatures will remain below normal, that the El Nino pattern will continue into June. And we're obviously almost there now. But they're thinking June is going to be a slow warm-up, is how they termed it. El Nino is going to continue through the summer with summer rains being possible, increased lightning and thunderstorms later in the season. And of course, for us in the fire business, that means potential for ignition later in the season when the fuel beds are going to be more receptive. So that could be something to watch for. As far as drought went, I know we looked at the drought maps last year, and if you recall, they were significantly different than this one, which does not really show any drought in California and certainly not in our region, which is great news. Only caveat to that was, and I was surprised with all the precipitation that we've had, that we still have several local reservoirs below 50% capacity. So they must be giant reservoirs. I thought they would have filled up. So the fire season prediction, obviously with all the moisture that we have, they're predicting a late start to fire season and that it will likely extend into winter. They didn't have any predictions. Of course, we all stuck our hand up and asked, you know, okay, so what's winter going to bring? When's it going to start raining again? And they don't have any models that really show it out that far. But we'll have a late start in fire season. If we do not get rain into the early winter, the fire season will continue until rain comes. And so I don't have a good answer for that, how long this is going to last. Our area will have normal fire potential, though, into June. And now they're saying likely to the end of June. Then we're going to switch to above-normal fire potential into the winter. And really, that's based on the fact that we have a very heavy fuel crop of light fuels. And that's, again, no surprise if you've looked around. There's a ton of weeds out there, there's a ton of mustard, there's a lot of those seasonal fuels that have grown up. They're going to dry out. They already are drying out. And if they're not taken out in the wildland areas, they're just going to be there. So those fires will have a potential to be fast-moving. But also, instead of burning out very quickly, they will sustain and have the potential to light the larger fuels because of the volume of those light fuels. Statewide fire potential, large fire potential is going to be greatest in the lower elevations, which, you know, we talk a lot about the Sierra and the Sierra Front Range. Well, this year, it's looking about places like where we are, in the inland valleys and foothill areas. So it's down in the populated areas, so it definitely bears some monitoring. And that's all up and down the state, us included. Here's a look at the May fire assessment map, and you'll notice it's showing pretty much all of California is normal. And you'll see in June, just as I described, it's pretty much that coastal foothills and inland valley range rather than the mountains. And I think forward, it's going to grow a bit, but it's going to maintain above average throughout the season for us. So again, what are we doing locally to deal with this? We have definitely made efforts towards public education. About 1,443 times, we've been out there delivering safety information and public education to all age groups everywhere we can. Of course, our fire vegetation management program is in full swing annually. We performed 1,276 vegetation inspections this year. And as you know, we have great success with that program, working with our residents, and great compliance. So that's happening again this year, and hopefully, that's going to make the difference. In addition, our fire prevention folks, it's been a pretty busy year with them. 610 new construction inspection plan reviews and new building inspections in 2018. And that pace is, well, it's slacking off a little bit, but they're still very busy. They've got a good desk full of stuff. In addition, we're out there doing building inspections and routine annual inspections, about 486 building inspections in 2018 in all of these different types of hazardous areas and properties. So as I said last year, we are here 24/365 to keep the public safe, and when incidents do occur, to respond quickly and make things better for our citizens. Thank you for allowing me to come and provide you with an update, and I'll answer any questions.
Councilmember Contreras. Thank you so much. You know, firefighters, the fire department, paramedics are regarded very highly by the community. And I want to touch upon two things. One is the lilac fire, because it just came so close to home. You know, I live a little bit more in the urban center, and I was about two streets away from mandatory evacuation. So I have a question regarding emergency community meetings, when we're in a situation that the fire can, you know, depending on the winds, could just come right in. Do we have a system in place where we could have an emergency community meeting where it could be done bilingual, and we could, you know, use a city facility? I ask because in certain parts of the city, not everybody has access to transportation, especially quickly when you have to evacuate. So I've always had a concern about that. And I want to see, do we have a mechanism in place where we can have an emergency community meeting? And is that something that we've ever activated? What does it look like? Do we need to build something like that? How do we get the word out? So I just, I wanted to get a little bit more information on that aspect of being prepared.
What we do when we activate the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, one of the components in there, one of the sections in there is public information. And the real importance of that is, we talked about the interconnection with the other EOCs and particularly the county EOC, and we're connected with a command post. So on the lilac fire, I had one of my deputy chiefs, who is actually in unified command, feeding me information back to our EOC about what the decisions they're making, what they're doing, where they're going. We also had the sheriff's captain at the time was in that unified command communicating back with his lieutenant, actually is our sheriff's captain now, in the EOC about evacuations, flow of information. And then we are vetting and putting that information out on all of the, on the Vista website, through social media, all of the different, you know, electronic push that we can to get up-to-date information and correct information out. And then also, I mean, we were seeing things in the media that was incorrect and working to correct that by putting out correct information that was vetted. So, and it is a full-time, at-the-minute, almost frantic pace of trying to process all of that and get that out continually to folks to grab onto, and in multiple languages. It is required now that the messaging that we put out through the county, so we would feed them if it was, the incident was ours or was in our jurisdiction, we would be feeding them information, and it's required to go out in English and Spanish. And they're trying to determine a third language, and I'm not sure what it's going to be yet. But that's, it's going out now in English and Spanish both, to the San Diego broader community and to the Vista community, to get that information out.
So what kind of aid can the city provide, or is it out of the scope of what we're able to do for those who don't have their own transportation to evacuate?
We, if we call for evacuations, depending on which level it is, we actually physically go through, and the people who can evacuate themselves, we shepherd them to do that. We establish and push the places on where to go and how to get there, set up shelters, which we've trained our staff to, and other cities have trained their staff. So if it's a Vista emergency, potentially, we would be moving them to another city, to Oceanside, Carlsbad, somewhere else, to get away from it. And potentially, we could shelter other cities here in Vista. Or if it's not such a fast-moving or maybe large incident, we would shelter our own here, just in a safe area away from the incident. And so we would, our sheriff's deputies go in and do the lion's share of that physical going house to house, neighborhood to neighborhood, moving people out. And then we identify at that point if, you know, we've got people who have mobility problems, that we've got to send an ambulance for. We send busing in areas if they don't have transportation. I mean, we, the concept here is no one's left behind.
And in terms of transportation, we don't necessarily control that. However, depending on when, let's say it's a fire, depending on when the fire occurs, we may have resources that are available from NCTD, the school district with busing system, again, all depending on when it happens and who's available. And those are resources that we would utilize through our Emergency Operations Center.
Thank you. And I want to touch upon just one last thing that I'm really interested in hearing a little bit more about. It's the zone promotional testing. So is this a process whereby internally, you know, our wonderful firefighters, paramedics are able to move up and, okay, and so is this primarily the mechanism for internal promotion? Or, and so this is a newer mechanism that's been put in place, or has it existed?
Yes. Before this, we, each fire department was doing their process internally. And so we were, but an internal process is going to require, what we do is reach out to our partners out there to get raiders. So you have outside raiders from other agencies coming in to raid our people. And there's a whole lot of, I mean, you can imagine with all the departments around us, we were constantly sending and asking for folks to come help us with the tests, and then we're helping them. And, you know, it's, and that worked that way quite a bit. And there's some inconsistencies we, you know, share, and we see other tests, ooh, that's kind of a cool thing, way to do this, we'll do it that way. By doing a zone test, we line up and we all commit to it so that all of our Vista folks are going to be raided by outside raiders, and all of their folks will be raided by outside raiders. But we're doing it all together, kind of to share resources and to standardize the testing so that, you know, it's as fair as we could possibly make it. The idea is always to promote our own people from within. Certainly at the engineer and captain levels, that's pretty much an absolute. We've never reached outside the organization for those levels. At management levels, it's more frequent to reach outside, but our intent is always to develop our own people and bring them up from within. Within this process, it is possible for our folks to test for other agencies, as well as other agencies test for us. And we'll see how that pans out. But again, we always, we always do try to focus on bringing our own people up.
And so this is a process implemented to standardize the review of, you know, qualifications of X person compared to Y person. And so is this newly adopted because of the report that was received? Or how does this report fit into this mechanism, if at all?
Not really at all. We've been on this, I actually, was something I participated in when I was the training chief a number of years ago. And we talked about it because we were just repeating, lather, rinse, repeat on these promotionals all over the place. And I got together with the other training officers and said, man, this would really be helpful if we did this. And we got all the experts from all the departments in the room. And we weren't able to get the ball across the line at that time. I had a really hard charger working for me named Craig Usher, who was a captain at the time. And man, we almost got the program there. And of course, later, when he promoted and became battalion chief, he was able to finally get it across the line. And I just think it's a great improvement for the whole process, because we get the best of the best in the room that are really helping everybody to see things the same way and really level the playing field for everybody across all the agencies. The report's more looked internally at our operations and really focused on our labor management road that we're on and ways to try to progress internally with our relationships. So that really wasn't, I don't think that was a part of that at all.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief Hahn. Great report. I just wanted to touch on the text alerts or the different ways that we alert the community to emergencies. And one of them is, there is a text alert that people can sign up for. And I know when the lilac fire was happening, I was in communication with a lot of the constituents, and some of them actually refused to sign up for the text alert because they thought that was too Big Brother. And then some of them had some issues down the line. So I just want to encourage people, please, sign up for the text alerts. Check the San Diego County Emergency App. You can download it on your phone. There's also an app I've had on my phone for a while that you can actually listen to the fire channel. You can listen to the radio chatter on the fire department. And you can hear also from the county and what's happening. So as much information as we put out there, we really need the community to be willing to receive the information and need the information. So I just wanted to put that out there. Don't be afraid to get text messages. They're not listening in, and they're not going to show up at your doorstep unless you need something. But it gives you information about what's happening and where to go. The other one is with the rains that we've had, the wild weather we've had recently, we even had a waterfall down on Hacienda where there's not usually a waterfall. So that area flooded really badly. So I appreciate not only the fire department, but I know city staff and public works were really, really busy during that time cleaning it up. But what it did was it really spurred the growth of weeds and flowers, et cetera, which are now, as you mentioned, drying out. And we have a lot of fuel in the underbrush. And I've had a couple of constituents the last couple of weeks call me and ask me, when are you going to get over here to this place or this place and clean out this extra brush? And I want people to know that we are on it. We have a schedule. We are going to be out there clearing out the additional growth in the underbrush in preparation for fire season. Now, I know in years past, it wasn't just the city doing it in conjunction with the fire department, but I have actually seen, I think, CAL FIRE in the community and some of our canyons and our back areas clearing it out. So it's a community effort regionally to come in to all of communities and make sure that we get these, the extra brush and the extra fuel, as you call it, cleared out before we really get into a dangerous season. So I wanted to make sure the community knows that we are on top of it and we're getting to it all. But I do want to back up a little bit to the beginning of your presentation when you were talking about Tri-City and the wall, the time on the wall that we have. And having gone on ride-alongs where I spent most of my shift at the hospital waiting for a patient to be unloaded or transferred from paramedic custody to the hospital custody. But you said in here, compliance, you used hospital compliance, and you used the word compliance a couple of times, used by the county to grade hospital compliance over 540 offloads. Vista had a 90.4% TOC compliance. I wanted to ask you if you could elaborate a little bit on what are the benchmarks for compliance? What does that actually mean?
The way I was using compliance there is our internal, what we're trying to achieve with our paramedics in this measurement is them getting a turnover signed by a nurse and documenting that time. So our compliance standard, we always shoot for 100%. If it could happen, I recall, it'd be great. It doesn't. Sometimes it's, you know, the nurse is too busy to sign it. Sometimes it's the paramedic forgets, or the patient's really sick, and that's not the really, that's not where we want them to focus. We want to take care of the people first. So we get all that. But to have that compliance rate so it's as high as possible, so when we look at these statistics, when the county looks at those and Tri-City looks at those, they're like, yes, that's real, and we need to do better. Because it does fluctuate. I mean, flu season, you know, whatever it is that's causing more emergency room visits, they need to respond to that moment and be flexible. And they have been, more so than they were in the past. Do we still get long wall time? Sometimes, yes. Some days, they can't get staff in, some days they just get overwhelmed. But in general, the trend is trending better. And then they're trying. And that's much better than the last report I gave when they weren't really believing they had a problem. And this helped us, because our paramedics are trying so hard and being compliant with the system, we're able to build these statistics to say, yes, we need to, this is real.
And we're working to improve our 90% to a much higher percent.
Yeah, and I've got some paramedic crews that are 100%. I mean, they just nail it pretty much every time, which is fantastic.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, and thank you to the fire department for all that you do for us and our community. We appreciate it.
Councilmember Green.
All right. Hey, first of all, thank you for a great report. I'm sure you worked super hard on that. I like it, and it was good. Three things I wrote down here. Number one, and if you could go back to this slide right here that you were talking about on the calls that were ran with the ambulances, and you had it broken down. that were ran with the ambulances, and you had it broken down into the four-part pie chart right here, I think it was on page five, the emergency medical service, patient transport by unit?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, which one of those, 126, 121, which one was ambulance four that we put into service?
123.
123. So 123 is handling about 17% of the calls.
Yeah.
Perfect. And then question number two was, and it kind of piggybacks on Councilwoman Rigby's here, is your transfer of care requirements, are those part of the criteria for your department to be accredited, or is that a standard of compliance that we put on ourself?
The transfer of care requirement is something we put on ourselves in meeting with the principals here, so the county EMS authority with the hospital districts and the fire department representation, which I'm a part of, we're like, hey, we got a problem.
Okay.
And so this is part of that negotiation on how we're going to establish that, yes, we do have a problem, and here's the way to, this is how we're going to prove it, and look at it, and acknowledge it, and then move to correct it, which we've gone that whole road and have, well, Tri-City has.
Gotcha.
There are still poor wait times at other facilities in the county, extensive wait times there. But we're lucky that Tri-City has stepped up and really
Recognized the problem.
Recognized the problem and tried to fix it.
Okay, beautiful. And then the last thing is just about your labor management alliance. I just want to commend you on that. You know, going into this, I didn't realize how the labor management worked, and how the laborers worked with the administrators and executives and stuff like that. And I know there wasn't that open form of communication before, and it had a little to do with kind of the morale and things like that here in the department. So knowing that you guys are meeting regularly with the president of the VFFA, and just making sure that you guys are all on the same page, the whole one-team-one-dream model is back in effect. And if I remember, you used to be a Vista firefighter, right? So you were
Yes, 30, almost 35 years now.
Promoted internally all the way to where you are now, right? So, you know, that's kind of, kind of what we like here in Vista and what we're looking forward to. So I definitely appreciate the strides that you've made, and the open mind, and open heart, and open form of communications with our firefighters, because we do have an amazing department, and it's great to have you guys all on the same page. So thank you so much for that.
You bet.
Okay, with that, thank you so much. We have an excellent fire department, the very best, and so keep up the good work. We appreciate you. Thanks. And with that, we will move on to our consent calendar, and the following recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in just one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have 14 consent items this evening. And I just wanted to mention that in item C3, some of the students, several of the students that were recommended for the youth commission seats, I think, are here. So maybe, maybe they could stand up if they were, are they here? Do we have any youth commission that were just appointed to the new ones? I thought I saw someone come in. Here they are, over here. So congratulations to all of you. We look forward to working with all of you. So congratulations to you. So with that, I will, do I have anything? No, nothing is removed from the public from the consent calendar. How about from, if not, I would consider a motion.
As presented.
Okay, and Councilmember Green?
I'll second.
Okay, please cast your ballots, your votes. That motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our public hearings. We just have one public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the collection of delinquent sewer charges, sewer service charges. The public hearing is now open. Our finance director, Mike Sylvia, will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Annually, the city prepares billings for sewer services for the upcoming fiscal year for both the city and Buena Sanitation District. Any account that's not paid by July 1st of the new fiscal year becomes delinquent and is placed on the secured property tax roll. There are no administrative fees or penalties or interest involved when an account is placed on the tax roll. As of the composition of this agenda report, there was just over $21 million in charges to be placed on the roll for the city, and about $8.3 million for the district. These totals, we know, will come down by past practice as property owners or ratepayers continue to pay their annual sewer bills through the end of June. In early July, the remaining balance is due for both the city and the district will be submitted to the San Diego County Assessor, consistent with prior fiscal years. Majority of utility ratepayers do use the tax roll billings, a standard process. And with that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Staff does recommend conducting the public hearing and approving the city and district resolutions.
Okay, with that, Councilmember Green, are you on there again? Is that the last? Okay. Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Well, I'd just say we appreciate the tax collector collecting all these fees for us. Saves us a lot of money. So just because you're delinquent doesn't mean you're not fulfilling your obligation to pay. So with that, this is a perfunctory item, and I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the ordinances drafted by staff.
Can I have a motion in a second? No more discussion, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. And you, we closed the public hearing, didn't we? Yes. Okay. Okay, the next thing we have, our discussion items, we have three discussion items this evening. Our first discussion item is draft fiscal years 2019, 20, and 2020/21 operating budget. Our assistant city manager, Ali Zimmerman, is going to introduce that item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. With me tonight is Sarah Taylor, Management Analyst, who prepares the city's operating and capital improvement budgets each year. And she's going to present the staff report. But before we get started, I did just want to take a moment to acknowledge other staff that spend a lot of time preparing your budgets for consideration each year. Supporting Sarah is Management Analyst Lillian Montez, who provides extensive amount of revenue and other budget development support, as well as members of every department that work diligently to identify expenses and revenues to prepare budgets that are balanced for the city council's consideration. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Taylor to present her report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The purpose of this discussion item is to review the draft operating budget and receive direction from City Council prior to presenting the final budget at the June 25th meeting. The agenda report will provide an overview of all funds, but focuses on the general fund. This presentation will include an overview of the total operating budget, the general fund revenue and expense estimates, as well as an overview of the six major spending categories. As was described in the operating budget overview, the city is moving from a single-year budget process to a two-year budget process as a means to use human resources more efficiently and to reinforce the city's commitment to long-term fiscal health by extending forecasting past a one-year period. A draft of the fiscal years 2019, 20, and 2020, 21 operating budget is being presented for City Council review. Staff has evaluated the financial, operational, and maintenance needs of the city and its associated agencies, and is recommending a total budget of $149,359,218 for fiscal year 1920, and $150,209,606 for fiscal year 2021. As this slide illustrates, general fund revenue, general fund or restricted monies, shown in green, fund the bulk of the city's expenses, including general government and all of public safety. Non-general funds, shown in blue, are restricted as to the type of activity for which the money can be spent. Most of Public Works, for example, is funded by non-general funds. This slide shows the general fund revenue summary by type. Page 19 of the draft budget document provides a summary showing historical data as compared to the projected revenues. General fund revenues and resources are estimated to be $83,101,42 in fiscal year 1920, and $85,472,231 in fiscal year 2021. A majority of revenues comes from just a few sources, including property tax, sales tax, and charges for services. These three revenue sources account for about 70% of the general fund revenue sources. The remaining 30% of general fund revenues are made up of a variety of sources, as shown on the slide, including Propel revenue of $8.1 million in fiscal year 1920, and $8.3 million in fiscal year 2021. The revenue from Propel funds the associated debt service, as well as $1.2 million in fire service operations. Before moving on to the expense overview, this slide shows projected general fund revenues compared to expenses. As displayed, all the city's property and sales tax revenues are needed to fund public safety costs. The next slide shows an overview of estimated expenses. Page 21 of the draft budget document provides a summary showing historical data as compared to the projected expenses. General fund, general fund expenses are projected to be $83,064,613 in fiscal year 1920, a 2.9% increase over the revised fiscal 1819 budget, and $85,469,108 in fiscal year 2021, also a 2.9% increase over the proposed fiscal year 1920 budget. This includes transfers out in both fiscal years to pay for debt service related to Propel, and subsidies to non-general fund budget units, including senior nutrition, the lighting and landscape maintenance district, and the Wave Water Park. This slide shows the revenues and resources over expenditures and other uses for both fiscal years. It is projected that the ending fund balance will be $35,529 for fiscal year 1920, and $3,123 in fiscal year 2021. The first expense category we will review is general government, which provides leadership and administration for the city. Additionally, this category includes economic development and non-departmental functions that are not related to a specific department, such as communications and contingency funds for the general fund budget units. A summary of this category can be found starting on page 70 of the draft budget document. General government expenses are just under 11% of the general fund, and total approximately $8.2 million in fiscal year 1920, and $8.4 million in fiscal year 2021. The public safety category is also entirely funded by the general fund. A summary of these expenses can be found on page 94. This category includes law enforcement, which is provided by the San Diego County Sheriff's Department. A notable increase in 1920 is a 5.5% increase to the San Diego Sheriff's contract. This starts the third year of a five-year city council-approved contract. This category also includes the services provided by the fire department, which include fire prevention and suppression, emergency medical services, and disaster preparedness. Public safety expenses are just over 66% of the general fund expenses, and total approximately $49.9 million in fiscal year 1920, and $51.5 million in fiscal year 2021. The next slide shows the breakdown of expenses for the community development category. A summary of this category can be found starting on page 118 of the draft budget document. Community development represents just under 10% of the general fund spending. As shown on the slide, non-general funds play a more important role in funding expenses in this category. The non-general fund budget units include sewer engineering and sewer administration for both the Vista Sewer and Buena Sanitation District. Both are joint members of the Encino Wastewater Authority, and the annual cost of sewage treatment and plant facility maintenance are the most significant expenditures in the sewer administration budget units. $5.7 million in Vista Sewer Administration, and $1.7 million in Buena Sanitation District in fiscal year 1920. Community development expenses are estimated at $28.2 million in fiscal year 1920, and $28.9 million in fiscal year 2021. Similar to community development, the public works category is funded mostly by non-general funds. Non-general funding sources include gas tax, maintenance, district assessments, and sewer fees. A summary of these expenses can be found starting on page 164. The decrease in this category from fiscal year 1920 to 21 is mainly due to the replacement of vehicles and equipment in fiscal year 1920. Public work expenses are estimated at $29.5 million in fiscal year 1920, and $28 million in fiscal year 2021. The next slide shows the breakdown of recreation and community services, which is over 8% of general fund expenses. The summary of this area of expense can be found on page 204. This category includes recreation programs, the Vista Adobe, senior services, senior nutrition programs, cultural arts, and the Wave Water Park. Recreation and community service programs continue to be impacted as a result of legislation increasing minimum wage to $15 per hour by the year 2020. The city employs approximately almost 500 temporary and seasonal employees during the year to support various recreation and community service programs. A $1 per hour increase effective January 1st, 2020, and January 1st, 2021 has been incorporated in the budget. Recreation and community service expenses are estimated at $9.2 million in fiscal year 1920, and $9.3 million in fiscal year 2021. Moving on to the final expense category, internal services. These budget units exist solely to support other city departments and are funded by charges to all other budget units. This summary starts on page 228 of the budget document. There is virtually no outside source of funding. The decrease in this category from fiscal year 1920 to 2021 is mainly due to the replacement of vehicles and equipment in fiscal year 1920. Fleet maintenance, which is managed by Public Works, is responsible for the replacement of non-safety vehicles. 13 non-safety vehicles are projected to be replaced in fiscal year 1920, and three non-safety vehicles in fiscal year 2021. Decreases in information technology is also largely due to equipment and network infrastructure replacement, as well as software purchases and license renewals in fiscal year 1920, with less capital replacement items in fiscal year 2021. Internal service funds, a non-general fund spending category, are projected at $14.8 million in fiscal year 1920, and $14.2 million in fiscal year 2021. This concludes the draft budget presentation. I appreciate your time and attention. It has been my pleasure to represent the staff who have prepared the fiscal years 1920 and 2021 operating budgets. Are there any questions or comments at this time?
Do I have any questions? Do I have any, I don't have, have any questions from the council on that? Yes? Oh, Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much for that overview. I wanted to go over just a few items here. Now, I know we had a discussion about the Measure Z revenue, and, you know, that seems very important to us, being able to meet our budget. So I just want to state for the record, I know that this is a conservative estimate. We're looking at 2019, 20 at around $250,000, but it grows significantly in 2021. We're looking at about $1.3 million. So I just want to state for the record, I really appreciate the way that the revenue, the potential revenue was calculated. We definitely want to put, you know, more conservative measures in there, because it's so important for us to, you know, get to this budget and have it balanced. But I do still want to see the range, what is this conservative to? So is there a timeframe of when that range could be provided?
Yes, as we discussed earlier, this is a number that we are making a very conservative estimate based on what we have seen from cities that have already implemented retail cannabis operations. But we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves and put in a number that we may have to come back and revise downward in the future. But we can provide those figures to you based on mainly the city of San Diego has the most robust operation so far. With the city of Vista, we won't know until we have a retailer open, and we have a few months of their audited figures in our hands to get a good sense of what an operation will look like, and then we'll have a better sense going forward. Part of this process with a two-year budget will involve the standard quarterly reports that we do, as well as a mid-cycle review, where we can bring recommendations to revise revenues up or down as seen. So
I was going to say, during next month, we can do research with the city of San Diego and anybody else that we can find that's got numbers that relate, and we can provide those to the city council.
I would really appreciate that, because I don't want to have to wait, you know, till 2020 to receive a window as to what this is conservative to, right? So I think it's really important for us to look at that range, definitely take to heart, you know, a very conservative estimate. But because we won't be able to meet our budget without this revenue, I think it's really important for us to have a little bit more information as to what that range looks like. So, thank you. The sooner we can get that, the better. I do have a question on graffiti abatement. So I know this is something that we've also spoken about, spoken with Patrick, and it's a lot of money that we have going towards graffiti abatement. We're almost at 300 We're almost at $300,000. So, and it's great, you know, that we tackle graffiti quickly. That's definitely a component of making sure that it's not attractive to individuals to have graffiti, so that way it's not up there for everybody to see. However, I would like staff to take a look and see what other cities are doing, and if there's any other programs out there, you know, not just here in California, but looking at the entire United States to see if there's cities doing some more creative work, and if they've, you know, been able to lower the cost of graffiti abatement by maybe including some more public art components in areas that are receiving a lot of graffiti. I just—$300,000, almost $300,000 is a lot of money to spend on various colors of beige, right? So, I would like personally to see what we can do better, if anything, to really lower the cost of graffiti abatement and/or shift part of that cost over to a more preventative type of program. So, that's something that I think is very important. We—you know, the trend is that it continues to increase, and I think it's—looking at it, it's really staffing. You know, 2019, 2020, we're looking at $191,000 in staffing, and in 2021, we're looking at around $200,000 in staffing. So, I just want to make sure that we're utilizing—it's two staff positions, correct? That we're utilizing those staff positions in the most preventative way, because staff time is valuable, and I would much rather have a better program than just having two staff members going and, you know, eradicating the graffiti quickly, but then it just springs back. So, I really would like to see some innovation within graffiti abatement, if possible. Lastly, I want to take a look at senior nutrition and services, because I know that this has been a topic of discussion here at the council. And so, in looking at the senior nutrition program, is there—because I was going through the breakthrough, are you able to tell me exactly how much money we're spending on the food portion of that?
If you give us a moment, we can—
Sure.
—find that in the line item detail.
I have the expense summary showing on page 221. And the reason I ask is that, you know, we were—we had this great discussion about this really big number, and moving it to 375,000, but I think what was missing from that discussion is how much of that money is actually funding the food that we were talking about. So, I couldn't find it. I don't know if it's part of the service contract plus operating supplies, or how that breaks down.
We do have service contracts with the two providers, one providing congregate meals, and one providing the home-delivered meals. Those contracts are based on a per-meal amount, so we make an estimate based on historicals of how many meals we'll actually be providing. And they total about $150,000 just for the contracts for the food. That doesn't include the ancillary costs for supplies, paper products, the electricity, all the things that keep the kitchen running. This is just strictly—the food part itself is approximately $150,000.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember Green.
All right, and I want to thank Councilwoman Contreras for asking you about the Measure Z funds, because it does look a lot—like a lot of our budget kind of, you know, weighs on what those funds end up being. So, a question that I had was, how confident are you in your conservative numbers that we're going to be able to hit those for our budget? I'm sure you've done some research, so based off your research, how confident are you in your conservative numbers?
We're pretty confident in those conservative numbers, assuming that the Measure Z businesses— the not all 11, but that we have a reasonable number of businesses that do open. We have some proprietary sales tax information from prior businesses that we've used to make an educated estimate, and now—and as well, we're watching the other cities that have these businesses going into effect. They may not all have the same 7% that Measure Z came with, but we can use whatever percentage they had and make a sense. So, we're fairly confident with that number.
And my—my concern was, per se, is that I know that the voters passed 11, but in looking at kind of where they're at in the stage of the game, per se, I'm looking at maybe, you know, three, four, five open within the next, you know, I don't know, six months to a year. I mean, it doesn't look like it's—we're not going to have 11 blasting off, paying us a bunch of tax revenue, and I want to make sure that the estimates that were made—
These estimates assume maybe 50% are open in the second year.
Okay. Okay, that's good. And then, on the recreation and community services overview page just that you showed me here on your budget, just a question I had on the cultural arts, and you may have mentioned it. It looks like it's a really large increase from 2018-19 to 1920, and then it drops in 2021 by a couple hundred grand, but it is higher by like $369,000 in 1920. So, did we do something awesome in 1920?
We do do something awesome.
Oh, yeah, we did. Tell it to me.
In the 25th anniversary of the Moonlight, the 40th, sorry.
Forty—good job, Ally.
There is a fifth show being included, and that is the extra expense that you're seeing in there.
So, I fully remember harassing Patrick about this now and asking why we weren't doing a fifth show every year, and I guess we're going to see how it goes before we forecast those profits, because we have season ticket holders that are used to buying a certain amount of four shows, not five shows. So, thank you. I really appreciate that. Other than that, I'm good to go. I like the budget. I like that it's balanced. I like that there's not a $300,000 structural deficit. So, thank you so much for working so hard on this budget. I appreciate it.
And while the Moonlight's celebrating its 40th season, in the following fiscal year, the Wave Water Park is celebrating its 25th season.
Good job, Sarah.
It is. Okay, Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Well, thank you to the staff for all your hard work on this budget. I am really concerned by the upward growth trajectory of our budget. Our public safety sector, in some cases, has 10% increases, and we're looking at year-over-year 6% increases. The increases in our expenditures are rapidly outpacing the increases in our revenues. And I know many people in the community were hoping that the marijuana money was going to be in addition, and that we would be able to do something for the community with it that we hadn't been able to do before. And so, the realization that we're only able to balance our budget by including a significant portion of the monies that we believe we're going to get from Measure Z is, to me, really concerning. And what I'm looking at is—I'm looking at, within the next five years, if our growth continues the way it's continuing, I don't understand how we'd possibly be able to live within our revenues. I think—I did the math roughly. I mean, our—our emergency reserves are shrinking as a percentage. We've—we'd like to talk about them as a percentage of our budget, but as our budget outlays grow, our reserve amount shrinks as a percentage, and it's difficult to maintain. Mr. Johnson, you have a thought you wanted to add there?
No, you're correct. On a year—once the budget goes up, the reserve does shrink. However, for the next two fiscal—or at least this fiscal year and the coming fiscal year, we've set our revenues so they maintain the 30%. Just—that's all I wanted to point out.
Yeah. I feel that if there is—and we all know there will be another economic downturn. It's not a matter of if, but when. We don't know when it'll be. It could be next month, it could be in five years, it could be in eight years. We don't know. But it will come, and where will we be when it comes? And so, I'd like to have a little bit of a discussion about the major drivers of costs, and if you could talk a little bit about the, you know, the additional payments that we're making to catch up with CalPERS, and talk about how long those are expected to last, and how many years we should expect to see 6% increases in our expenditures.
And I'd have Ms. Zimmerman answer that question, but maybe Ms. Zimmerman, if you could start off with the 2.9, 2.9, and how the capital expenses play into that.
Sure. To the city manager's point, the budget does increase about 2.9% for 1920, and then an additional 2.9% in 2021, when you just look at them compared apples-to-apples to the prior-year budgets. That does include increases in the law enforcement—our law enforcement services contract. It also includes increases to salaries and benefits that were adopted through MOUs with the three bargaining units, and the PERS costs, which we'll touch on in a second. But we also put aside money each year on a planned replacement schedule for all of the city's vehicles, equipment, and infrastructure. And then you see when it's time, based on a replacement schedule and need, to make those replacements, the budgets will go up and down accordingly based on bringing in those reserves to pay it. So, the expense will increase, but there's an offset revenue that goes with it. In 1819, our capital outlay for the general fund was less than $275,000, but for 1920, we're recommending or presenting just over $1 million in those replacements, because there are more things to be replaced in that year than a prior year. So, you're going to see the budget fluctuate in that case over time. As it relates to PERS, they provide us with about a five-to-six-year look forward into what they see their rates going, and about three years ago, they—two or three years ago, PERS did a huge actuarial study of their own. They lowered—they increased the mortality rate of retirees, so people are living longer. They also took into account the fact that less people are coming into public service, so we have fewer people that are supporting retirees as they go out. And they also looked at the discount rate because of their return on investment and how it was going. And so, they—I do believe it was in the budget overview report, and Sarah can probably speak more specifically to it, but they provided us with a—with cost increases over the next five to six years that go up about 25%. She'll tell me for sure if I'm right on the number. But the cost increases that will help us—that will help us get to a place where PERS can—PERS is trying to get to a 90% funded rate, which is commendable, and it's the right thing to do, but it is coming on the backs of the cities and all other PERS agencies. There's some leveling off that will come as more members—or more employees come into this system under the newer Peppera rate versus the older Classic rate, and so that will start to level off. We're at about 42% Peppera employees right now, and as employers retire and new people come in, their retirement rates are—will help the city as well. Sarah will tell you what—
Yeah, it's about a 49% increase from 1819 to 2324 is what's predicted right now in unfunded liability, as well as the city's contribution.
And how well do we understand how many years those types of increases might be expected?
We are given an actuarial report, and it kind of shows at this time, those cost increases to start to level out about the 2324 period, but in another year or two, we could be given additional information in the new actuarial reports.
We expect them to level out. We don't expect them to ever go down, though.
Right. And they're not going to continue to go up 20% a year.
That's not the expectation at this point.
Right. So, I'm—you know, in terms of the capital expenditures, like page 109, if you look at the fire suppression budget, I backed out the $503,000 in capital outlay. And one of the things I wish we did differently, and I was talking with one of our citizens about the budget, and he was taking a look at it with me, and, you know, the—the use of reserves, I understand, but it is confusing. And I wish that we had a—I wish we had a completely separate capital expenditure budget that was a companion to this, and that in our general budget, we make our savings payments, recognize the depreciated costs on an annualized basis, and then if we were to separate out that number, it makes it much easier to compare, you know, if we had a separate line. And in our—we have a capital expenditure budget, but doesn't include fire capital expenditures and a lot of other capital expenditure prob—is not in there. I don't know why we combine these, because it really makes it difficult if you really don't understand in great depth. You know, for citizens that are reading this, you know, years ago, when I first started reading our city budget, it was confusing, and I understand it now, but I think a lot of people don't understand it.
I can understand that. We have a completely separate capital improvement budget that you're probably referring to, which are construction projects.
Right.
In this term, in the definitions, capital outlay is basically any one-time purchase of more than $5,000 is defined as capital outlay. That's a typical government accounting standard definition. We can find another way to maybe talk about it in a layman's term when we're having the discussions, but that's how it's defined.
Well, I'm talking about in the summary that we put out. I mean, if I've got to go in, and I've got to get my calculator out on every line and back out the capital expenditures that we've saved for, that we've put into a savings bank, and now we're pulling that money back out of savings, and we're going to spend it, do you understand how that makes it difficult for us to do our job?
I think it—as an example, if you turn to page 95 of the operating budget, you know, on the summary sheet of public safety as an example, it's got the total amount for public safety, and then it's got a line item at the bottom there that says capital outlay, which, you know, we could—we could reduce, and we can add it in with a subtotal, maybe? That might be clearer?
I—I want more depth than a pie chart or a line graph. I want—I mean, I want to see the numbers going across in a straight line for five years and projected, and they're here, but I've got to manually back out all the cap acts. So, I mean, it's—it's challenging, and it'd be nice also to see the percentages laid out without those amounts that are one-time expenditures. I'm—it's just a—it's just a—you know, I—I don't think I'm the only one that feels that way. It's—you know, it takes a lot of of effort to back those out to really have an apples-to-apples comparison, and the fact that we have to point it out. And I also don't like the word's use of reserves, because to the average citizen, that looks like we're taking money out of our emergency reserve fund, which we're not. But that's—to the—to the layperson, that's what it looks like, and it's—you know, it has to be really explained. We need to find a better term to describe that, and there must be some more descriptive term. But that's a lot of time focusing on the splinter, and I want to focus on the log. The log in our eye is the fact that we have massive increases and that we're only balancing our budget on revenue that, you know, a year ago, we couldn't have even counted on. That's a real problem. We've—we've got a problem. We've got a real revenue and expenditure problem. Obviously, the problem is more on the expenditure side. We don't have a lot of control over the growth of our revenues. But what are we going to do? And we—we owe it to the people we represent to ask, what are we going to do if we're this razor-thin, and we only balance this on money that's newfound money, that we don't even really know how much it's going to be yet? What I'm asking—I'm asking the council to direct the staff to prepare a—basically a five-year look forward, and I'm asking that we look for new efficiencies in every area of government, and that we find a way that, you know, by the time we get to the first, you know, biannual revision of this, and certainly by the time we get to the second, that we see some better cost savings, I'd like to see us look at how we can more efficiently deliver some of our emergency services. Maybe it's through telemedicine. One of my neighbors calls the ambulance at least once a week. That's a great expense that we incur. Is there—can we buy that person an iPad and Facebook him or FaceTime him to a nurse? I mean, I'm serious. There's technology that exists for people who are, you know, regular customers, who may not, on a frequent basis, have a life-threatening, or is there another lower-cost staffing alternative to address the individual who has a non-life-threatening call for emergency services? We're going to have to look at how we evolve services, not just for fire and EMS, but also, we're going to have to work with the sheriff's department. You know, I led the fight to get more police on the street, more deputy sheriffs, because I think it's so important, and I appreciate technology, but we all know that there's no substitute for, you know, for badges on the street. I don't ever want to be in a position where, in order to balance our budget, we have to reduce fire, EMS, or deputy sheriff staffing levels. So, we're going to have to look at how we create greater efficiencies through the—through technology with what we've got, and looking at a five-year, you know, outlook that's concerning, very concerning, I would just say, what is our five-year plan for, you know, creating greater efficiencies, shrinking our—you know, doing the same that we're doing now with less? And how do we methodically lay out to the public that we have analyzed and prepared what we will do if there is a—an economic downturn? Because it will come, and when it comes, you know, I hate to think that we're going to, at that time, in the face of an emergency, start— to, at that time, in the face of an emergency, start thinking about what we might do. I think we owe it to the people of Vista to have a plan for what we're going to do if that happens. And this being so razor-thin, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. So I'm deeply concerned.
And Councilman, Deputy Mayor Franklin, we have, most of the, the longer-term staff of the city has been there through the good and the bad times, and especially in 2008 to 2011, it was extremely thin. We downsized the organization by about 27%. And I think our lowest employee count, which is the, the bulk of our costs, was about 268 to 269 employees. Right now, we're at about 289, 290 employees. We have not grown rapidly, which is by choice. We're a little thin in areas, we know that, but we know there's a downturn that's around the corner, like you said, whether that's next month or, or one to five years. And so we're well aware of that. We're also looking at different positions. So starting about six months ago, any position that was vacant, somebody left the city, somebody retired, we go through a process where we analyze that position to see if it's critical, if that position is needed in that way, or is there's other efficiencies to, to go forward with. So we are thinking in those terms, and I agree with you. There's certain things within our system that are not sustainable long-term. And so we are looking at those efficiencies, and we will continue to do so, and we'll report back to council.
And I appreciate that. And just finishing my thought, I don't want to have to ask the employees to take a pay cut again, and I don't want to have to lay people off. If we start to think about this problem today, and if we develop a five-year plan, then we can put ourselves in a position where we don't ever have to write pink slips. I don't want to do that. I don't want to fire anybody, and I don't want to go to the employees and ask them to take a pay cut because we didn't tighten our belt today when we're looking at revenue shortfalls, when we're looking at a budget that's this thin. It is, I mean, it would be grossly irresponsible not to develop that plan now. And if we need to trim 20 positions, we should do it by attrition, not by having to, you know, lay people off in the middle of a, of an economic downturn. So we need to think about what our options are, and, you know, when, when folks retire out of a position that's not necessary, we don't fill it again because that's a far better way to reduce staffing levels than to ever have to, to look at folks. I mean, you went through it, I wasn't here. You know, I can't imagine how difficult that was for those of you who were on the council and those that served in the senior staff and the management. I don't want to be in that position. I want to, I'm, I'm pulling the alarm bell right now and saying, how do we, how do we explain to the public that in 2019, when times were still relatively good, and when, you know, we didn't know when it was coming, but we knew it was coming, what did we do to prepare? And that's why I'm asking my colleagues to join with me in creating a five-year strategic budget plan that widens the gap between our expenditures and our revenues, allows us to continue to grow our emergency reserves at a rapid pace, and puts us in a position where, when this economic downturn comes, which we know it will, that we can celebrate with our employees, that we can celebrate with members of the community, that we're not cutting, we're not laying people off because we had the forethought, and then they'll hoist us on their shoulders and they'll call us heroes when the cities to the right and left of us are cutting people and we're not having to do that because we prepared. I want to be prepared. That's my concern.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with some of the concerns my colleagues, excuse me, brought up with, we are in a very razor-thin edge here, and we're banking on money from pot shops. I don't want to be that city. And I, I agree with the coming back, and I appreciate what the city manager said about looking at some of the ways that we can forecast based on previous experience, what we're doing now, what we should be doing. I think there are some areas in, that we could put in for a five-year plan, that we could look at, things that we might be forecasting based on what happened before, things that we should be looking at, possibly do this, possibly not do that. So I think that's a very good idea. I agree with that. We could talk about some of the things that we'd like to see in it. I think that has a lot to do with senior staff and department heads talking about their departments' essential, I like to think, my position on city government or any government is it all needs to be essential services. If you're providing non-essential services, you're probably taxing the people too much and wasting money. I'm a low-government kind of person. You just need to be doing what you're supposed to be doing for the people and then let them live the rest of their life the way they see fit. So I think everything we're doing should be essential services, and right now I see that we are doing that. And I know when I first came on the city council, I got the budget, and I sat there and I read it, line item by line item by line item by line item, because I just knew there were things in there that we could cut. We had already cut so much because of the recession in 2008. There really wasn't anything left for us to cut. We had to keep certain things because we have to do those essential services. Some of the cost drivers that we are seeing and experiencing are outside of our control. For example, the cost of minimum wage, that's going to be going up again. The cost of gasoline to run our city vehicles, our trucks, our, our different things that we have, that's going to be going up again. Some of the outside services that we use, those contracts are going to be going up again when they come up for renewal because of the same reasons. Their staff personnel costs are going up, their supply costs are going up as well. So we don't really have a lot of control over that. We also, as was pointed out, we don't have control over the income that we get. It's based on the tax revenue that we get from the various places that were outlined here. So we really are walking a very, very fine line on our budget all the time. We have to always balance what our priorities are, what we can do. The second set is, if we could, it would be a priority. We're not sure if we can do it, but it's going to be on a list of things to do in the future. And it's just like the families, you know, I, I don't know about you, but my family budget, I've got the things I have to do, and I know I have to do them, those are my priorities. Then I've got a list of things that I'd really like to do if I ever win the Lotto. We're never going to win the Lotto here at the city. So I do agree that I don't want to be caught whenever this happens, but we do see the indicators that it's coming. We've seen the indicators for a while. I want to be ahead of that when it gets here. And I think this is a good budget, and it's a lot more understandable now than it was previous years, and I appreciate that, and we talked about that. Some of the terminology we could do a little bit better on so that constituents, as well as other people, aren't confused by the terminology of what we're really doing versus what we think we're doing by the words that we use. So there's always room for improvement there. But I like that we have a balanced budget right now, and I think that's good. Not all cities do. And I think we are in a good place right now. My concern is, as has been expressed by my colleagues, in the future, the next five years or so. So I would agree with Council, Deputy Mayor Franklin, on coming back to us with a plan. These are some of the things that we might forecast are happening or could be happening, or these are the trends that we're seeing. These are some of the things that we might be able to, to do to mitigate that, to go around it. So I would support that, that request. But I also wanted to say, you talked about different level of medical services. At this past month's Public Safety Committee meeting down at Sandag, where I serve, I represent the North County Inland on that committee, the chief, the Fire Chiefs Association president gave a presentation about kind of that very thing, that they're talking about a program called Community Paramedicine, because they recognize a lot of people using paramedic services really aren't emergency needs, and finding another way to help those people without them having to go to the hospital and without our paramedics being taken out for hours at a time while they're waiting with a patient along the wall, waiting for somebody to transfer them into the hospital. So I would like to also ask, I don't know what any cost savings for that kind of a program would be. I don't know how much that program has been developed. There wasn't a long presentation on all the different elements of it. I would actually like to have a better presentation on that. What does community paramedicine look like? What can it look like here in Vista? And if there would be any cost savings to the city without losing any public safety for our community? Because public safety is paramount. Public health and public safety are the two things that we're supposed to be doing. Aside from that, I think we are in a good place. I thank you for the work that you've done on this budget. I don't want people to be running out of chambers screaming that we're in trouble. We're not. We just want to make sure we don't get into trouble. So thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Contreras.
I really like the idea that Deputy Mayor Franklin brought up about a five-year plan. I'm 100% in agreement with that. I think it, it will only give us more information, which empowers our decision-making, not just here, but also informs the public a little bit more, which I always think is a priority of the council, to make sure that the public is well-informed. And one of the things I would like to add to that five-year plan would be the role that Community Choice Energy can play in redirecting or taking some of the load off of the general fund to pay for certain positions, different infrastructure, because that is a, could be entirely different stream of revenue. So if we're going to do a five-year plan, I would like to see one with Community Choice Energy and the implications that that has, and one without it, because I think that's going to be important as well. You know, there's different things that we could do with the revenue coming in, potential revenue coming in from Community Choice Energy. So I just wanted to add that in there.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I appreciate your attention to my concerns. I would, I, I do appreciate that staff brought us a balanced budget. I know that that wasn't easy. Your first draft was far from it. And I also recognize, and I want to remind the public, that a lot of these cost drivers were not created by the city council or our staff or our employees. They were created by new mandates, they were created by the state of California. But nonetheless, they have really eroded a lot of the work that we've done to restore services and to build a responsible budget plan for our city. Now it's our challenge to react to those new mandates from the state, and we have to live in the new environment that we find ourselves in, and that may require us to make some significant changes. And I just, like I say, would like to see us do those ahead of, of necessity. So with that, I would make a motion that we...
We don't need a motion, this is information only.
Oh, we're going to, okay, well...
Deputy Mayor, we heard consensus on the five-year forecast, so...
Okay, you'll, you'll bring, that was what I wanted to make the motion on.
But it will come back separate from the final adoption of the budget.
So you'll bring that back to us so that we can, as a council, devise what we'd like to see in the five-year, and then you'll, once we agree on the elements of the five-year plan and what we're going to name it, then staff can move forward with building that five-year plan. Is that fair?
Correct. And it will be separate from the adoption of this budget in June.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Our discussion is over on that, so then, thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, you may.
I know Ms. Zimmerman said it, but I want to thank Ally Zimmerman, Sarah Taylor, and Lily Montez for putting together this budget, the two-year budget, which is new for us in the last 10 years. But I also want to thank all the departments and the staff that worked on it, because it's a lot of work to forecast and compile. So I just want to say thank you, staff.
Okay. The next, our next discussion item, our municipal code amendments, vehicles and traffic. And our community development and engineering director, John Conley, is going to introduce that item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Sam Hossenin, the city's traffic engineer, will be making the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick background on the municipal code as it relates to vehicles and traffic. The vast majority of the vehicle and traffic title of the Vista Municipal Code was adopted in 1970 with very few amendments since adoption. So staff reviewed the entire title, Vehicles and Traffic, and some changes have been proposed that will be presented tonight. And the main reasons for the changes are to streamline the implementation process, facilitate enforcement, and in some cases, just to clarify some outdated, ambiguous sections. So start with sections 1012010 and 1012070. And that's just a simple amendment to remove ambiguity about general need for city council resolution for the installation and removal of traffic control devices. This is kind of a, the way it's written currently is kind of a blanket code section where the rest of the code refers to individual, I should say, the vehicle code. The municipal code is more specific about where council action is needed. Section 1012, maybe I should go back, and the way to do this is, maybe if there's any questions about, since there's a lot of detail involved in each code section amendment, if there's questions about a specific code section amendment, maybe I'll pause and kind of give the opportunity for questions. So the next one, the section 1012040, and that is just an amendment to correct the manual that we use in implementing traffic engineering changes around the city in the, currently what is referenced is an incorrect manual that probably doesn't exist. Section 1012100, and that is currently city council action is needed to determine lane use at intersections, and that's basically the lane configuration at an intersection, turn lanes, through lanes, and so on. And typically, we do that based on technical analysis to determine what the best use for lanes at an intersection, and in the past, has not resulted in any subsequent negative input from members of the public. Any questions on that?
Councilmember Rigby.
Deputy Mayor Franklin's name is up there before mine.
Yeah, okay. Deputy Mayor, I, I was thinking that we were waiting to the end, I didn't realize we're going to stop at every section, but okay. So first, Councilmember Rigby.
Well, I actually think mine might cover a couple of different ones. Taking away from the city council, talking about lane, doing the lanes differently, turning only or not turning, and no U-turns, as well as stop signs. I don't know if you've gotten to stop signs yet.
U-turns and stop signs are coming up. I'm sorry.
Okay. And in your, your staff report, you wrote that there had been, not resulted in subsequent, subsequent negative input. I have to tell you, for some of these lane, lanes that we've re-designated and some of the stop signs that we've put in, there has been a lot of negative comment. So I, I was a little thrown off by the comment and the remark in the staff report that there had not been any. And I really would not want to take away the public's opportunity to address the city council or the traffic commission when we're talking about putting in, taking out stop signs, or re-designating directions for lanes. So I, this, this, these amendments give me a little bit of heartburn, and I would not be in favor of those. I think those should still come to the city council.
So there are stop signs, I will talk about in a little bit. So the proposal is not for all stop signs. The lane use at intersections is this item, obviously. And obviously, we're bringing these proposed amendments to the council, and of course, whatever the, the decision is, that's what we'll go with. So I'm thinking, maybe should I just go run through the whole presentation?
Yeah, and you may have missed it when you stepped out, I'm sorry, but we're going to take each item one by one, and if there's consensus, then we'll move on. And if there's a discussion, then we'll get your prerogative as a council.
I missed it, too.
Okay.
I don't know if it's the right time to chime in or not, but I just fully agree with everything that Councilwoman Rigby said. I won't be voting in favor of removing the council's prerogative on these items.
On any of the items?
So...
Maybe I'll run through them.
You know, I'm okay to go through these one by one?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so are we okay to go to the next one?
Well, any other comments on section 10.12.100 regarding the lane configurations?
No, I had a few problems with U-turns.
Okay, so on the lane configuration, do we want to see if there's a majority support or not, and then we'll move on?
No, my, mine with this one is, again, no, it should come back to city council. This is one of the things... is one of the things that every time we do something different with a lane, we hear a lot of feedback from the community. And I wouldn't want to take their right, I mean, they can always come and yell at us afterwards. Once it's done, and they get mad about it. But I'd like to cut that off before we get to that point. I'd rather continue with putting it out there in the public and letting the public address it. And if we don't get anybody who says anything, then, okay, go for it.
So, that sounds, so it sounds like this one may not be a go. So, I think, like the city manager said.
Well, I think we've heard from Councilwoman Rigby, and I think Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I don't know. I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't, I don't, I don't want to look at every single lane change and every single U-turn in the city. I don't think that I, I don't think I'm qualified to judge that. I'm not a, like, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I don't pretend to be one. So, but I do know that when I, I do that when it backs up and I can't get around, but then I complain, and then they change it. So, I'm thinking, I don't know.
I don't necessarily think that I'm a traffic engineer either. But I think we talk about being open and transparent and honest with the community and giving them an opportunity to have this discussion. That's one of the things years ago that the city council did a long time ago that really upset me, was that they made some decisions without coming to the community, and then having to go back and redo them. And I don't want to do that.
We can't micromanage every single decision, you know, every single intersection over every single decision. I don't think we can do that. If you have concerns, I guess we could say that, you know, say that, but I-
And not everything will be a concern. But we can't just wipe everything off the slate.
But you're asking every single U-turn, every single lane change in the city that it comes here. And I think that that, I think that's like over-
I have a question about the scope of this authority, if I might.
Sure.
It says, "at intersections." How many feet?
These are the lanes that serve an intersection specifically. So-
Does this have to do with adding or removing lanes, adding or removing parking?
This is, no, parking is not part of this at all. This is just existing lanes and reconfiguring the lanes. Let's say there is like a through lane, like one through lane or two through lanes, let's say, in a left turn lane. So, possible change could be the curb through lane may become like a shared-
Not going to be adding or removing bicycle lanes, adding or removing parking lanes, adding or removing the number of lanes.
Number of lanes, not bike lanes, no.
Although you may increase the number of lanes at the intersection. So, you might put people into two left turn lanes instead of one. Yeah?
Yeah.
I don't particularly have a problem with giving the traffic engineer that authority, because that does devolve into a level of minutia. And I think it's maybe appropriate for some experimentation to see how we get it right, because we're not always going to get it right on the first time. I don't really necessarily understand what the, I know the extent of work that goes into that. It's not a quick thing, because you're diagramming it. And I'm not really sure I understand why that can't go on a consent agenda. I could, I could be moved either way on that.
So, the technical analysis that goes into through, that goes into this is going through the Highway Capacity Manual, which is basically determining the level of service. So, we put in all the traffic volumes, the intersection configuration as a whole, and then we run the scenarios, basically, that exist in versus what we're proposing to change. And we just see what the, basically, delay is what we look at. And I was just going to say, part of, you know, initially, what I presented, the reasons streamlined in the process, anything that we present to the council goes to the traffic commission first. And that's kind of just streamlined in what we think at the staff level, we can make that technical, you know, call.
So, I don't see a great controversy here. But I'd like to hear from my colleagues.
Councilwoman Green.
Whoa, I had it on already. I was just going to say, if I'm reading this correctly, it's just saying to determine the lane use at intersections. It's not saying lane insertion, lane removal, anything like that. So, you're just saying, hey, I already got three lanes here. One's a left turn, two are through. Maybe I switch two to left and one through, if that's going to improve the level of service at the light, which we have every light raided throughout our city, correct?
Yes, we do.
So, you know which lights could possibly use a little reconfiguration of lanes, correct?
Yep.
So, for me, if you're not adding or removing lanes or affecting parking at all, you're just trying to improve traffic flow at an intersection, that's your job, not my job. I'm 100% behind it. So, 1012100, I'm a green light on, no matter what.
Okay, Council, Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I just want to say, if we do give you the authority on this, I definitely expect a heads up, particularly on those traffic changes within my district. When we're in meetings with staff, if you could pull those out for our districts, I, I will defer to my colleagues for their districts, because I don't necessarily want to go into depth on every U-turn in the city. But the ones that are in my neighborhood that I drive every day, that my constituents drive every day, I'd like to be notified and made aware.
And we can provide that and updates to you.
Councilwoman Rigby.
I can agree to that, if we're notified ahead of time, because I really would love to know what your definition of subsequent is, because we get a lot of complaints on some of these, especially the stop signs, and when you take away a U-turn. Those are some of the things that really give people heartburn. So, and to answer the question, it can go on a consent calendar. This isn't miring down anybody and anything. It's just making sure that we know what's coming, so that our constituents can know what's coming. And some of these that we've done, or have been done in the past, that people thought was no big deal, turned out to be a very big deal. And people came out in droves and had something to say about it. And I don't want to be that city council that isn't listening to the people and isn't giving them an opportunity to be heard before we do something, and then have to turn around and backtrack it because of the backlash. So, if we can do as was suggested and let each of us know in our district what's coming, then we can deal with it then if we need to, and bring it to the council if we need to. I'm okay with that.
Yes. And, sorry to say, but the stop signs and the U-turns, those are different sections that will be coming up, that we can talk about separately as well.
That's only our first section, you guys. We got a few left to go. So, moving on.
1012110-
Oh, wait, Deputy Mayor, did you want to talk again?
Do the stop signs or not?
Not yet.
Because we touched on it. We have not. I'll wait, I'll wait.
So, this is the U-turn, actually, the 1012110. This is a specific code section about U-turns where the proposed amendment is to give the city traffic engineer the authority to prohibit U-turns at intersections at the staff level.
So, that's me. I'm sorry. That's it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so on, I'm sorry, excuse me, can I speak on this one?
Go, go.
So, this particular one I support. And the reason I support this, just so you guys know, is at the intersection of Foothill and Vista Way, that is an allowable U-turn, if you could imagine. And as you're turning, and I live off Foothill Drive, so I make that left turn all the time, it is the most impractical spot for a U-turn. I've only witnessed somebody trying to make a U-turn around that Del Taco huge, it's a huge intersection. I've only witnessed it one time, and it was almost three accidents caused in that one U-turn. And I immediately called and said, "Is that allowed?" I couldn't believe it. So, there's some areas that have just been overlooked, that it's extremely dangerous to actually make a U-turn in. And I think that Sam should have the authority to put a sign there that says, "No U-turn." My understanding was, after the traffic pattern changes with the new development over there on Foothill and Vista Way, that's something that he's going to look at. We didn't want to have to re-stripe or put new signs. But for this particular, you know, traffic code per se, this was something I 100% supported, because I was hoping it was something for my district at least, that would definitely improve safety. Because I think when those intersections were made, they weren't looked at as being these huge, you know, arterial roads with all these lanes going through. So, I support this one. It's nothing I have a problem with. But I want to let you guys know why I support it.
And the turning capacity, I saw somebody at that intersection try, they tried to do it, and they had to turn back up, turn back up. You know, it was, it was not a good idea.
Very impractical in a lot of locations, so.
Seen it, too. So, okay. So, now can we move on?
I'm okay with this one, too.
Everybody? Okay. Next section.
Next is 1012130. This is amended to give more flexibility on how vegetation is trimmed. And I'm sorry, I have to refer to that one for the exact change on that. So, we're just adding, basically, that currently, the code talks about trimming vegetation, basically, based on height. I'm just adding the word "or width," because a lot of times, we're cutting vegetation back away from the street, not just the height. So, that's just a flexibility, just to be more clear, that we can trim vegetation based on height and width.
Does he, okay? Shake heads. Okay. Moving on to the next one.
So, chapter 1020, this is the stop signs. So, currently, actually, it doesn't, the code section doesn't require a city council resolution for most stop signs. So, we're adding, actually, more situations. We're kind of giving more scenarios about where city council action would be required versus staff level. So, the proposal is for T-intersections. And for through streets, side street stop control would be given to city traffic engineer. But then, two-way stops and all-way stops would be city council action. So, that's to clarify this section, kind of in a nutshell.
I don't see any buttons pushed.
So, only for side street control at T-intersections, and what we would consider like busy streets, where the side street kind of reasonably seems to be that it should stop. That's where we're talking about city traffic engineer authority versus all other situations where it would require city council resolutions.
Deputy Mayor.
Councilwoman, how do you feel about that?
Oh, I was going to save my comments to the end, because I think my comments will cover the whole thing. But, yeah.
The end of the whole thing, or each, or this part, this particular number, chapter 1020?
I think my comments are the same for every section. So, I'm just going to let Sam finish his presentation before I chime in.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Explain this to me again, where it forms a T-intersection. I understand that. Where a side street intersects a through street. Explain that to me. Give me an example.
So, yeah, through street, let's see, this 1020. So, we're adding a definition, actually, for a through street, which is, would be either a collector in the circulation element of the general plan, that is formally classified as a collector, that shows up on the circulation element map as a collector or higher, or a street that carries 3,000 or more vehicles a day. So, the stop would not be on this street, but it would be on any street that's coming into that street. So, you know, example would be maybe like Eucalyptus Avenue, for example, that carries, you know, 3,000-plus vehicles a day. Any street coming into Eucalyptus Avenue would have a stop sign under the city traffic engineer's authority. We wouldn't be going out looking for those. But if a request came in, let's say, then the evaluation would be basically just based on the volume and the classification of the, of the-
This is basically residential streets.
Could be residential, but mostly, it's more like through streets, collector or higher. Those are typically the streets that connect to a major road.
I think I'm opposed to this. And I think I'd like to see these signs, if they're not controversial, they come on a consent calendar, nobody pulls them, they go through. If somebody wants to talk about them, then we discuss them.
I would agree with that.
So, next is 1032040E. That is just changing the requirement to post. Signs informing the public of temporary no parking, let's say, like for a special event or construction, from 24 hours in advance to 48 hours in advance, which is what we normally do anyway. 1032040F, that is, this section is, or subsection is deleted. There's something that is defined as a safety zone in the municipal code, which does not appear, as far as I know, anywhere in the vehicle code or the California standards. So, it's really, nothing that we can implement. 103204H, this is another sort of older subsection of the code that requires parking, or gives the city traffic engineer really the authority to prohibit parking within 20 feet of the approach to any traffic signal, boulevard, stop sign, or official electric flashing device. It just sounds like it's a very old section that was just kind of taken from somewhere.
Well, I got a problem with this one, because I've asked about this exact, and I asked if this was in the ordinance, and I was told no. But here it is, and you want to remove it. In most places, it's illegal to park within 20 feet of a stop sign.
This is only if, if it's posted. So, this does not apply. It's a blanket.
I mean, I like to ban 20 feet, because people are always parking right next to the stop sign, and it obstructs your view of the intersection and of the stop sign. That's a good law.
So, my opinion on it, professional opinion, is that it's, it only is an issue at certain locations. And I think it should be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, because I think it's too broad of a prohibition, and most people really don't know about it. And it could cause, if it's something that we start enforcing, it would be causing a lot of issues for parking.
But as it's written, it says, "Only if it is indicated by appropriate signs or red paint on curb surface."
Correct. And that's what I said. It's only if it's posted. So, I think it just opens the door, even though, like I said, it's, you know, it's been there that nobody knows about. It opens the door for posting many intersections, just for-
The code, as, as, the current code requires that the allowance for parking be posted, or the prohibition for parking be posted?
Prohibition.
What's, I don't understand what's wrong with this. Why do you want to get rid of it?
Because I think in most cases, parking at these locations does not cause a traffic safety or operational issue.
Yeah, but it's only prohibited right now if it's indicated with appropriate signage or by red paint upon the curb surface.
Correct. Which we can do without the code if there's an issue. So, I guess what I'm saying is that it should be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, rather than-
Isn't it now? Wouldn't we have painted the curb red or have a place to sign, because we evaluated the, I'm confused.
That is correct. But just the fact that it's in the code, I think, I think-
You just want greater flexibility to-
I think that, yeah.
I like this language. It's, I got a ticket in a city I lived in the past, and I was just supposed to have known as a motorist that 20 feet from any stop sign is a prohibited parking area. And my general experience as a motorist is, parking within 20 feet of a stop sign is bad for traffic safety. And I can understand that it should be indicated. But I like the general idea of keeping that 20-foot zone clear.
It's, like I said, I think it's good that it has to be posted. It's not applicable blanket, just because, like I said, my opinion on it is that most intersections, I don't think-
I don't see the impetus to strike this language.
I was just thinking about the downtown, because people park within 20 feet of the stop signs in the downtown. And like, I think it's case-by-case.
But the code as written now requires it to be posted, and therefore, it is, as the code is written now, case-by-case.
But there's parking places striped already downtown that are within 20 feet of the stop corners, the stop signs.
Yeah, but the code as it's written only says you have to stripe or indicate that it's no parking. What am I missing?
Correct. It has to be posted. That is correct.
So, what am I missing? Somebody else jump in here. Help me, help me understand the, my muddled thought.
Oh, so you can do it in areas where it's not posted, then?
Yeah. Are, so is, this would accomplish what I want?
I guess I'm taking the pressure off the traffic engineer to do it, since it's in the code, because I think it's most locations, it is not an issue. Most intersections in the city, parking at these locations does not cause an issue.
Yeah, but it's only prohibited if it's posted.
Correct.
So, don't you have the authority to be the one that posts it?
Yes.
Well, he has the authority now in the existing code.
Do you have the authority to-
Yeah. Do you, under the existing stat, the existing code, have the authority to determine 20 feet within a stop sign, whether it's parking? So, why do we need to delete this? What greater authority does this allow you?
It's up to the city council, like I said. It's just-
But I, but what is the difference?
We have the authority under the code today to stripe it where it needs to be done. I think Sam's saying that we don't need a section in the code that specifies it has to be within 20 feet of every single intersection, and we should be evaluating them on a case-by-case basis.
I think that it should be left, because I think, generally speaking, it should be prohibited. That's my experience as a motorist. I like the language. I'd like to leave it in. It still allows you full discretion. What you're telling us is the code as written right now just allows you full discretion. And this has been a sticking point for me. A lot of my neighbors are having trouble with this in the areas I represent. And so, I want it left. My thoughts.
Councilwoman Contreras.
Actually, Mayor Ritter, you brought up the point that I was going to bring up, because I was, you know, in discussing this, that my first image is downtown, and how, when I like to go to wavelength, if there's a parking that's close to it, which would happen to be really near a stop sign-
20 feet's a long way. 20 feet's a big area.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. And so, I don't know if we followed this exactly, how many parking spaces we would lose downtown. That's a concern for me. I don't, is that a legitimate concern? Am I understanding this improperly?
That's basically, my take on it, is that having it be in the code specifically might draw the attention to it, that where we might be spreading- draw the attention to it that where we might be spreading this red curb at locations where I believe, like I said, most intersections, I do not think that this is a traffic safety or operation issue.
So right now, if this remains in the code and I park my little car within that 20 feet, then I'm?
No, not if it's not posted. It does have to be posted. But whether this code is there or not, we still have that discretion.
Okay. Our attorney might have an answer. Daryl Piper, our city attorney.
Well, I note that the code actually, in subsection H, does not require posting. It simply says, "No operator shall stop, stand, park, H, within 20 feet of the approach to any traffic signal, boulevard, stop sign, or official electric flashing device," period. It has no reference to notice in that particular section. There is a reference to notice up in section F, which describes a somewhat different situation.
But subsection F is deleted.
Struck out.
Right? They're deleting that one.
It is proposed to be deleted along with section, subsection H. H is the one to which I'm referring, which has no, on its face, no requirement for any posting.
I believe the city attorney is correct. This, this section 1032040 deals with each subsection separately as far as the posting requirement. So this may not be, this may be the reason actually why it is being deleted, but so this was.
Are we?
The law as it's written right now allows total flexibility on behalf of the traffic engineer. I don't, I don't see what greater clarity. The only clarity is the, this is a matter of whether or not we think in general that we should be evaluating, and I believe that in general we should be evaluating within 20 feet of a stop sign, because it's my opinion that that's a prime place to, in a lot of neighborhoods, like a lot of the ones that I represent, a lot of my neighbors have reached out to me. I have had multiple requests for this, for people to not park right at an intersection. So it might not be right for downtown, but it is right for mine, and I want to leave it in the code because in a lot of the neighborhoods I represent, this is absolutely applicable, and the law provides total flexibility right now for you, the traffic engineer. If we're downtown next to Main Street at Wavelength Brewery, it doesn't have to mark the curb.
But the city attorney is correct.
It doesn't say that. The attorney just said.
No, it says it right here. It says the where, it says when such place is indicated by appropriate signs. So if you don't put a sign, it's not prohibited, or red paint upon the curb. If you don't paint the red sign, if you don't paint the red curb, or you don't put the sign, then it's not prohibited. Right?
Deputy Mayor, if you would look down at subsection H.
H, that's the one I'm talking about. That's the one I want to keep.
No, you're reading F.
No.
H is, says nothing about being painted.
Yeah, so, okay, so it is totally prohibited. Okay, well then amend it and add to H the same language, "When such place is indicated by appropriate signs or red paint upon the curb surface." How about that?
If that's the council's direction, that's.
Yeah, that solves the problem. You're right, I was blending the two, but so it already is, see, I was told in the past, and that's what I'm confused by, I was asked, I asked specifically on this question and was told, no, it's not prohibited. But in fact, here it is, it is prohibited. I knew it was because prohibited everywhere else. So this simply requires us to, to notice it. I don't even want to change it. I like it just as it is. I really wish we'd just leave it, but I'm okay with adding the notification.
My recommendation would be not to, just because I think it's too broad of a prohibition that vast majority of people do not know about.
I understand, I understand the ambiguity.
I mean, I don't think it causes issues.
I'm okay with if we just add that it needs to be noticed. I'm fine with that.
Councilman Rigby, did you want to chime in?
I agree with the deputy mayor.
And now he's okay with it?
Yep.
With, with the notice.
Sure.
We can add the language from subsection F that identifies the red curb markings that Deputy Mayor Franklin recommended. That's not a problem.
Sign or red curb, either way.
So you're, you're going to not red line out section F?
We would keep section F and add the language, "When such place is indicated by appropriate signs or by red paint upon the curb surface."
In subsection H.
Correct.
Amazing. Thank you. Moving on.
Moving on.
Okay.
That's not a small deal to some people I represent. Sorry, it's not.
It's not.
1032040J, so let's see. Currently, the code allows 20 feet of red curb at commercial or multifamily driveways to the traffic engineer. So the proposal's increase that to 100 feet and also be specific about it, that that is also would apply to intersections, not just commercial driveways. So that is the proposal on this one, and this is one of the kind of maybe more common things we do generally is for side distance, pulling out of a driveway or pulling out of a street that parking is causing an issue with visibility. So that is what this proposal is.
I just want to say I like this one.
All right.
1032040K, just a clarification, street sweeping signs are installed by the Public Works Department, not engineering. This is a general addition to 1032040, the section we just talked about with a lot of the subsections, and let's see, this is a person's additive that's, so that's what some of these sections are enforceable without signs or markings. So this just gives the city traffic engineer the authority to install signs and markers where needed. So this is different from what we just talked about in, in H, I know it's confusing, but in cases where the, one of these subsections applies without the need for signs and markings, gives city staff the authority to add those signs and markings, and usually this is where a location is just been a problem, and it's a recurring location. Code enforcement is enforcing out there, but it's not solving the problem. So we would be able to put in signs or markings just to reinforce this existing certain subsection.
Okay, everybody shake your heads.
Yes.
1032055, this section currently regulates the parking of oversized and non-motorized vehicles on city streets with some exceptions. It's proposed to delete most of these exceptions. So there is an exception for 24 hours on local industrial streets. There's an exception for vehicle repairs, and then loading, unloading is given a 24-hour period, propose to reduce that to four hours. And there's also an exemption for residential streets for four hours. So we're talking about oversized vehicles. These are big, basically work trucks, box trucks, semis, that's the kind of vehicle we're talking about here.
So you're, you're moving 24 hours on industrial streets. So what are you giving, are you giving them four hours?
No.
No, you're giving no time, zero?
It's been a problem actually with, you know, semis basically staging.
So zero on those?
Correct.
Okay, but industrial areas, like a motorhomes and residential streets?
So this is not recreational vehicles. This is just the oversized vehicles.
Got it, okay.
So if a recreational vehicle is greater than 24 feet in length, 11 feet in height, or nine feet in width, it still doesn't qualify as oversized vehicle?
So the definition, yeah, that this is, so this is exceed 24, I think it exempts because there's a separate V section.
But some of the, I've got a problem in my district with people living in motorhomes on public streets. I think you know the area that I'm referring to because I've been complaining regularly about it, and this is something they just did in the city of San Diego, is get rid of all the, or outlaw people living in motorhomes. This is another coming problem we're gonna have to deal with. So I don't know what we're doing on it right now, but we need to take a good look at it and bring it back to the agenda if we're not doing that.
So we have a separate section on recreational vehicles and oversized, I want to look at the definition on this because it doesn't, I want to be specific about it. No person, so this is the definition, this says, "Oversized vehicle shall mean any single vehicle or combination of said vehicles which exceeds 24 feet in length, 11 feet in height, or nine feet in width, or any single vehicle combination of said vehicle manufactured." So that's the 10,000 pounds. So it really doesn't exempt recreational vehicles. So I think it may apply to that.
I think that's fine because that allows us some leeway there. It doesn't prohibit every recreational vehicle, the smaller ones. I think, I think that's good. I think it's a good change to go from 24 to four.
So yeah, those exemptions is what is proposed, actually, and I'm trying to find the recreational vehicle, because we have, like I said, we have a separate section on recreational vehicles where there's a procedure for permitting and so on, and loading, unloading. So those, those things would not be affected for recreational vehicles. This is just parking kind of outright.
So is the council okay with section 1032055?
You okay?
1032070 and 1032080, there is a provision in this section that allows vehicles to perform emergency repairs on public roads, which is proposed to be deleted.
So.
Oh, sorry.
I can still change my tire on a public street, right?
This is where, you know, discretion of enforcement, obviously, if it's, you know, flat tire, probably, reasonably probably would not be enforced.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a good change.
We've talked internally, if somebody's in, you know, they pull over because they have a flat tire or something like that.
Right, or they're radiator blue.
But if somebody's sitting in the street and they're doing radiator repair, yeah, it's not allowed.
Got it.
1032110, parking on narrow streets. So this section requires a city council resolution to prohibit parking on both sides of a 20-foot wide road and on one side of a 30-foot wide road. So the proposal would be to give that authority to the city traffic engineer since on these roads, it's readily apparent in really most cases that parking is not allowed. Sometimes people start to park, and that's when we have an issue, even though it's really clear, and this just gives the authority for the city traffic engineer to post those streets where there's an issue, basically.
Okay. Okay, we're good.
1036010, time limit parking, this is kind of a cleanup item. We really don't do too many of these new, you know, time limit parkings, but the current code sets the time limit for time limit parking to 24 minutes. So this is being proposed to be changed to either 15 or 30 minutes, which is kind of more standard. 1036050, diagonal parking, so this is a city council resolution.
So did you change that to 15 or 30?
Either 15 or 30. It'd be, the option would be.
Oh, you could have the option. Okay, okay, got it, okay.
What would be the distinction?
Sure. I don't think it exists anywhere, but it's in the code.
Okay.
So what would be the distinction? What would make you choose 15 minutes versus 30 minutes?
It's based, a lot of these are based on requests, and again, you know, we really very infrequently do any new, you know, time limit zones, and this is one that does require city council action. So this starts with a request basically from a business, and then it's considered, you know, by staff, and something is proposed that would have to go to traffic commission and city council.
Do we have any of these markings now?
There are some, a few out there, yeah.
Do you stencil the time limit on the top of the green?
Yes, usually it's a sign and a green curb with a stencil.
Okay, everybody good? Okay, moving on.
1036050, this is diagonal parking, which we have quite a bit of in the downtown area. Another one that is proposed to switch the authority from the city council resolution to city traffic engineer to implement diagonal parking.
Everybody shake heads?
It's fine.
Got it?
One question I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Green.
We will be adding parking spaces by making them diagonal, not taking them away, right?
We would not do that unless we're adding, so usually we.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Go through this analysis on paper, basically, that we draw to make sure that we're adding parking. 1036080, let's see, parking shall be, sorry, trying to remember what this one was.
Oh, this is the one we were talking about. Commercial vehicles in residential areas.
This is a separate section, actually, that deals with parking of commercial vehicles in residential areas. This is also separate from the oversized vehicle ordinance we just talked about. So this would be in line with the, the last section that we proposed the amendment. So this one allows, currently allows, commercial vehicles, let's see, to, to park, says while making pickups or deliveries or goods, but it doesn't set a time limit at all. So we're proposing to add the four-hour time limit, which would be in line with the oversized vehicle proposal as well. That one went from 24 hours to four hours. This one just matches that.
But it's not, that's not, that's not like in neighborhoods of like motorhomes, that's not talking about motorhomes.
Yeah.
I just think four hours is kind of short for loading your motorhome, loading or unloading your motorhome.
So that, yeah, the motorhome, there's a specific, and I don't have it in front of me, on the recreational vehicles, there are specific rules that deal with that and exemptions and so on, that are separate from the oversized vehicles and commercial vehicles.
Okay.
So this would be like, maybe like a moving truck, you know, that kind of thing, or somebody's doing repairs.
Well, can a moving truck, can they move in four hours when they're?
Well, the limit is, there's kind of a reason for the four hours. The 24 hours, I think, is too long because that's overnight.
I don't think it takes them 24 hours to move a house, but maybe it could take them eight.
But this is more about enforcement, that somebody's not there basically, you know, for extended periods, because I don't think enforcement is gonna go after somebody that's during the day actively loading, unloading for moving or working on a construction project. So really, that limit is, just makes it reasonable for enforcement, so that somebody's not just leaving the truck out.
As long as we don't have somebody who's overzealous that's, wants to enforce.
Yeah, typically the.
I'd say if somebody's moving, we will allow them to move.
Okay, just, just checking.
Mayor?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
What was the question?
I.
Oh, Councilman Rigby, sorry.
Thank you. I wanted to revisit RVs on public streets because that's become an issue in our community, and the deputy mayor alluded to it. I know all of my neighbors talk about it, and you said it's somewhere in here, and I don't see it. This particular chapter is for parking, standing, and stopping on streets and public property. So it's not in this chapter. Where are we gonna revisit RVs?
We are not dealing with RVs in any of these changes that are proposed tonight. We can bring a separate item back to discuss RV regulations specifically, if that's the direction of the council.
I would ask that we do that.
And Sam, maybe you could just review what the restrictions are for RVs currently.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that in.
Okay, sorry.
It's not here.
Okay, so, yes, everybody? We're moving on? Okay, moving on.
This is the last one, 1040010, let's see, this is for loading zones. So this carves out some specific loading zones, like for school loading zones and passenger, passenger loading zones at schools. This gives the city traffic engineer the authority to establish those specifically from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM on school days, but any other type of passenger loading or bus loading zones would still be city council authority. So this is only in front of schools.
Would you, but would you do that across the street, like Link Vista Magnet Middle School? Would you allow them to load there, the school bus on that busy street? No.
Typically, we do this adjacent to the school, be like the front or the side, the curb, basically, that's adjacent to the school property.
But not in a very busy?
But we would not do it on a street like Civic Center Drive. It would be a side street or a parking area that we would choose for that.
We would not do it on Eucalyptus either, for that matter, for Vista Magnet Middle, just because it's not wide enough for.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would be, but I was just reading this.
Yeah, this would be most likely where parking already exists, and it's wide enough where we convert the parking to passenger loading or school bus loading just for those hours.
Or find a side street where you can do it.
Not away, yeah, so, I mean, I think, you know, when it gets away from the school, that's where we'll probably think, okay, maybe it's still, you know, should go through traffic commission, city council. This is directly adjacent to our school.
Okay, got it.
Yes, that was, this is the last one.
So it appears there were three changes to this. That was chapter 1020, dealing with the stop sign issue. We will not remove that, directed by council. And then in section 1032040, subsection F will remain, and in subsection H, that will remain with the, the language of "When such place is indicated by appropriate signs or by red paint upon the curb surface that is similar to subsection F." Is everybody in agreement to that?
I don't believe F was proposed to remain.
What was that?
F, I don't think there was any issue with F by being deleted. I think the issue was with H to remain, right?
Yeah, F was to remain.
We want to keep F.
Yeah.
The safety zone?
No.
I don't believe F was, I think H was the one that was proposed to remain with the addition of the requirement for posting.
Give me the page number on that again.
Page 10 of 21 in the packet.
10 of 21.
This was related to the safety zone?
I don't think there was a discussion on that.
And we didn't know what the safety zones were, right?
There was, there was a discussion, but if you guys, if you'd like to remove it and keep the last part to add to H, we can do that.
Yeah, you, you said you didn't know what a safety zone was or it wasn't well defined, right?
Correct.
Then I'm okay with deleting section F.
Yeah.
As long as you move that last after the comma to down.
To section H, correct.
Got it.
I made a note in my agenda here that we decided to keep that, to keep F. So that was my understanding, is that we are keeping F as, as is.
There may have been some confusion because there was a lot of discussion about F during H, but we're taking language out of F about the red curb markings and putting it under H. That's what I have.
I thought you made a compelling point about those safety zones. We don't know what they are. So why, do you, do you agree?
That was the problem. They didn't know what a safety zone was.
It seems like it's a carryover from.
It's referenced in our code multiple places, so it seems to me we've defined it somewhere.
I don't believe I've seen that anywhere in the code or the vehicle code, the state law.
Okay, so there's a majority to remove F by keeping H with the language that was explained. Okay.
And you've retained the power to make it no parking where necessary within a safety zone, should you elect to, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, any request for parking where it affects safety operations, we always look at that, of course.
Should you find it necessary, right?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Oh, are we almost done? Everybody? I have, we have a speaker.
I think that was it.
Is Phil Church still here? Okay, come on, you got three minutes. You sat through all of that, so.
Madam Mayor, esteemed council of debate, and the folks that actually carry the weight, thank you. This, this discussion clearly reflects my concerns about this agenda item. And I want to thank Director Conley for endless hours. He's already spent with me trying to sort out what any of this means and why I shouldn't make an issue out of anything. And yet, here I am. And most of the general comments I could make in three minutes pertain to consistency of, well, refer to the California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is specifically our reference in the city of Vista. The intent, I believe, of the manual is to have everyone that drives expect the same rules when they get to a city or an intersection, that not being able to park within 20 feet of a stop sign is the rule. So in the city of Vista, if it's going to be arguably an individual choice with the authority of the traffic engineer, I would suggest that we have a really big sign with a whole lot of writing on it, a street light, striped reflective markings, and a painted curb, if anybody has to stop and figure out what intersection this is that does or doesn't apply to common sense, safety, and standards of all other cities, probably in California. This is, this is something I've personally experienced in Vista, being an interpretive moment at, at different intersections or traffic situations that then get changed because now we've added a lane that two can turn right on the red light, which changes the whole nature of the whole, everything else. The, just, just one example of, my point is, chapter 1020, that has to do with stop sign placement, specifically at a T intersection with a traffic load of a certain criteria or more.
Sir, your three minutes are up.
Doesn't include roundabouts. Now what?
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Green? Nothing? Okay, so I guess with that, you have all the information you need, all of you? Everything? Anything we need to do?
Yes.
Okay. We need a vote? Okay, vote for approval of, I need a motion.
A move that we accept staff's recommendation with the changes that the council discussed, and that's it.
Deputy Mayor?
Second.
Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. We're on to our last discussion item, which is D3, which is the Sandag Transit Funds. And I asked to put this item on the agenda. A balanced transportation system is critical for San Diego. You know, I'm absolutely, I want you to know, I'm absolutely in favor of transit. However, and I've ridden transit, a lot of you probably have, I've ridden, you know, New York, DC, Chicago, Tokyo, it works. It works in areas that have density and have, and have housing, you know, population density and housing, which, you know, we don't have in Vista. 96.5% of the San Diegos use their cars to get around. 3.5% of the people use public transit. And the number of people riding public transit has gone down in the last few years across the United States, as well as in California. So anyway, so that, so I'm, Sandag has a bold new vision, we all know. And I, and I'm not going to go through all of it, but they have, I have the parts of it that's like five big moves that they're, that they're offering. I'm not, I'm not arguing that they, that they shouldn't do this, this, these five big moves, but, but I'm just arguing that I'm not willing to give up the transit money that, or the transnet money that you, that my city constituents and all of Vista has voted for. I'm not willing to give that up to, to the transit, this transit, new transit plan. So, and so right now, I mean, the new, the new transit plan has a lot of things in it that really don't, don't help us up here. You know, they're asked, you know, we already pay extra tax for our roads, and we've paid it all over this time. They're going to ask for a new tax to approve this new transit plan, but they also want some of the money from transnet to be put into the new plan. And so like, some of the things in the new plan are, you know, they're, they're going to, they're talking about, you know, tunneling, tunneling underground to like from the Delmar Bluffs, from tunneling from downtown San Diego and to Coronado to alleviate the bridge traffic, a direct line from downtown San Diego, maybe to the border. A lot of things in San Diego, and transit works in San Diego. It just doesn't work so well up here in, in our North County. So that's, anyway, so that's, our Prop A, our transit, our Prop A, we had 16,279 votes, 66.65% voted yes, 8,145, which is 33.35% of the votes voted no. So that's transnet passed, and that was a half a cent sales tax, which is what you've all been paying. And out of that, we've have, I was trying to think how many, I have it here. There were, just a minute, there's, so 35% of the corridor products have been completed, 28% are in progress, and 37% of the projects in, in transnet, in the current transnet, have not been started. They're, they're all the freeway projects that haven't been started. 30, 37% of those are freeway projects, and the 78 is one of those. And it was promised to us in the transnet, in transnet, when we passed it in 2004, in the ballot language, it was promised, you know, expanding, the 78 was in, in that, along with the, some other freeways, you know, the 76, which did get done, but 78 didn't, did not get done. So anyway, so I'm, I'm just against taking any money from transnet and putting it into this new plan. I'm not telling you I don't, I support transit, I support transit. I, their new plan, I'm waiting to hear from that. I, I don't know if we, if you're going to want to pass another tax to do that. But I'm, but the one we passed and we voted on, I'm not willing to, you know, that's what was voted on, and that's my promise is to, when I, when you vote on something, I, I stick with that. I'm not going to change it. And plus, especially when our 78 freeway needs expanding. So that's kind of where I stand on it. And I have lots of people that want to talk. Okay, so Councilmember Contreras.
Are we going to let the speakers go first, or did you want to have?
I have 25 speakers.
I think we should, I'd be in favor of the speakers going first and then I'll have first run.
Okay, okay, so you each have, you each have three minutes. So we will start with, start with Supervisor Desmond.
Well, hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I've got, I don't know, only have three handouts, so you have to share.
That's okay.
And part of what I'm sending out is, is the actual ballot language of the 2004 ballot. And it was, you know, the tax, it was voted on in 2004, the tax went in place in 2008. So we're 11 years into a 40-year tax. And to change it now to having all of the road money go to transit projects, to me is absurd at this time. Transit works in, in the center core of San Diego. Out here in, on the 78, and the 67, and the 52, kind of the peripheral freeways, we're still going to need roads. And this grand plan of Sandag's, which it doesn't even have a price tag yet, but it's going to be many, many billions of dollars with tunnels and with 100 mile an hour trains and all this other stuff. I kind of look at it as, you know, there's today, there's tomorrow, and then there's Tomorrowland. And what they're presenting is Tomorrowland. And it's going to be 30 years or more before we ever get to that point. So in the meantime, we still have to do things to fix our roads. And this Tomorrowland, actually, only, the goal is to get, right now, there's 3% of people in San Diego County that use transit. The goal is to get to 10%, which leaves 90% of us still in our cars and our vehicles. So the 78, what's planned for the 78 is HOV lanes. I mean, it's not really, in general purpose lanes aren't even, weren't part of it. It was just HOV lanes and fixing each of the connectors on either side of the 78. You're going to get your RENA numbers here very soon, which are your housing numbers, and we're supposed to build probably along the 78 corridor, probably about 40,000 to 50,000 more households along the 78. And we just don't have the capacity to do it. And most of the people's complaints about any new traffic, any new housing is, is traffic. So I think, I still, we need, we need to push and make sure, you know, the 78, the 67, the 52, those projects get done and are part of a lockbox or something to that effect. There's still, according to Sandag, at a Sandag meeting, it's like the second and the last page in what I gave out, says there's still going to be approximately $21 billion expected to be left between now and 2048 in Sandag, in transnet. 21 billion. We need 30 billion to get everything done. 21 billion's about what we're going to have. To fix both interchanges and the, and put an HOV lane, it's about 2.2 billion. So it's only a tenth of, of the money that they're going to have between now and 2048. So I think, you know, I'm not against transit. I think we should have a parallel plan where we're still, we're putting in the roads that were promised. And if, if these things are not carried out, I mean, the integrity of Sandag is just going to plummet from its low place already, to, to where nobody's going to, you know, go for any new taxes on, on any, anything in San Diego County. So I would urge you to hopefully support a letter by your mayor to oppose moving any of the transnet dollars, particularly from our roads to projects in San Diego to transit. Was that my time?
That was your time.
Was that my 32nd morning?
Your three, your three minutes is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor, thanks for your leadership.
Joe, is it Howdy? And I'll start calling. I'm going to call three, and the other two, if they'll line up over here so we can move people through faster. So next is Ray Aller after that, and Amani Flyers.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be your pleasure and the council's pleasure to provide that everybody gets to speak by changing the amount of time to two minutes per?
No.
No.
Can't do it. Okay, moving on.
Good evening. We are at the zero hour on climate change. On May 15th, John Cornyn, Senator from Texas, joined a growing list of Republicans stating the time for action is now on the climate crisis and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We're confronted with dire news every day. Fires, tornadoes, floods. Research says if we don't act now and continue on the path that we're on now, in 2020, it will cost $100 trillion a year to recover from the storms we will have. Indeed, civilization may collapse. Highways with more lanes are not the answer. They have traffic jams as soon as the lanes are built. Air pollution today causes 9 million premature deaths on this planet every year. That's more deaths than the Holocaust. Air pollution decreases our cognitive ability. Our elementary schools right now around the country are causing problems with health. Mental health of children, dementia in adults, increased heart disease, asthma, ADHD, and much more are caused by air pollution. 95% of the world breathes dangerously polluted air, and cars cause air pollution. Every time infrastructure advances to improve connections between people, social well-being, and the economy improve. Our country went through a road system, a canal system, railroads, highways, the interstate highway system. We need more mass transit. We need less cars. We must get out of our cars and not encourage more. We need a world-class transit network. We need to live in communities that are 20-minute neighborhoods, where 90% of the residents can walk or bike to meet daily needs within 20 minutes. To conclude, by not accepting the county offer for a presentation, you keep Vista in the dark. You said you want to be open. Several of you did tonight. I didn't hear that around this presentation. That's unacceptable. You have the truth, or you act as if you have the truth, and that the people of Vista should not hear, express their, their own viewpoints. I urge you to wake up. We must act now to support mass transit.
Time is up, sir.
Not more roads.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Aller, followed by Amani Flyers, followed by Linda Friedman.
Hi, I'm, I'm Ray Aller. I'm a physician. I've lived up here for over two decades. And over the last 20, more than 20 years, I've relied on public transit to get to work every day I've gone to work. Now, if public transit weren't available, I could not have lived here. I own and drive two cars, but they're only, the only practical and safe way for me to get to work has been public transit. People will use transit if it's accessible. But I heard earlier that only 3% are using it because it's not accessible. We need to focus on making the systems we have accessible and not claim that because we're North County, we can't use public transit. Councilmember Contreras has observed that public transit is especially lacking in some neighborhoods, and is especially critical in emergencies. Business will flock to a city where there is a robust public transit infrastructure. Are we going to be that city? A lot has changed in the last 15 years. If you don't think so, talk to the tornado victims in the Midwest. Talk to the residents of Paradise. of Paradise, talk to the residents of Mozambique. The time has come for us to create more public transit, and accessible public transit, and not more pavement. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Amani Flyers, followed by Linda Friedman, Rebecca Medici, and Pat McFarlane.
Hi, I'm Amani Flyers, and I'm a new property owner here in the cottages of Shadow Ridge, Vista, nine months. And before that, I lived for almost 50 years in Thousand Oaks. My condo was five minutes from the 101 freeway. I saw it widen from two lanes to eight lanes over the years, and this increased the noise level, the accidents, the fire trucks, the police. It didn't double, but at least it tripled. Sitting outside had become impossible due to everyday noise of ambulance, police, fire truck accidents, and of course, the exhaust of increased traffic, creating even more stressed-out drivers. Widening the 78 freeway from six to eight lanes will not only double, but triple traffic, noise, accidents, and of course, pollution. I'm vehemently opposed to widening freeways anywhere, having experienced it firsthand. Now that the 78 is only 10 minutes away from my property, it will only invite more traffic, but also, with not only more traffic, but also businesses. And do we need any more malls along the freeway, ugly signs, bright LED lights, and all that, what I mentioned before? You all heard of, or have seen the movie, You Built It and They Will Come. And that's only the beginning of our future problems. We need more efficient public electric buses, trains instead. I grew up in the Netherlands, one of the most densely populated countries in the world, and their transportation has evolved over the years, and it's still constantly evolving. It works. That country is not thinking, just because things have been a certain way, it means that it's still right for today. It's not. We live in a new era, and need and can modify old rules to accommodate our present environmental concerns. Public transportation, if done well, and geared toward students, the elderly, the educated adults, those without a driver's license, and of course, the environmentally concerned class of people, should be affordable, should be affordable, cheap, clean, efficient, and connect to other modes of transportation at various stops, like transfers, which not, is not, not efficient right now. Studies have shown it will reduce pollution, lung disease, cardiovascular disease, asthma, allergies, et cetera. It may even bring people of all ages, ethnic backgrounds, and financial backgrounds closer together, and initiate conversation about anything, especially saving this earth of ours from increasing pollution, research by several.
Your time is up, ma'am.
I'm not done, but thank you.
Thank you. Linda Friedman, followed by Rebecca Medici, followed by Pat McFarlane.
Good evening. My name is Linda Friedman. I am a Vista resident, and stand before you tonight to address Sandag's new transportation vision, as well as Mayor Ritter's draft letter to Hassan Ikata. I'm not sure I pronounced that right. In her letter, Mayor Ritter has seemingly unilaterally indicated that the city of Vista is opposed to Sandag's proposal. As a voter in Vista, I'm dumbfounded how such a response can be considered when the residents of Vista have not been afforded the opportunity for Sandag to outline its proposal to the community at a city council meeting, and no formal inquiry has been solicited from the community regarding its stance or stances on the proposal. Let it be on the record that I reject the notion that Vista should be held to prior year commitments regarding highway expansion. As a former Los Angeles resident who traveled over two hours each way daily for a mere 26 miles of the 405 freeway to my employment at the University of California, Los Angeles, I can offer firsthand testimony that adding lanes to an already direly congested road only makes matters worse. Studies about the effect of adding lanes have determined that this only led to more vehicles, more congestion, and increased deterioration of air quality, let alone the quality of life. To hold fast to old budget commitments merely because of personal vested interests will contribute to an already growing problem of congestion, and disastrously underpins cultural and economic isolation. If new transit options are not implemented, the many Vista residents without automobiles will remain encased in limited boundaries with limited economic opportunities. Moreover, such an action would compromise air quality that's already teetering, on the point of no return within the next decade. Transparency is a major issue here. The community is being omitted from the opportunity to learn about expanded transportation options that could become available. This flies negatively in the face of transparency, and smacks of elitist, prejudicial, and exclusionary decision-making. I therefore request that the city of Vista vote against submitting Mayor Ritter's letter to Sandag as it is written, and that it put a Sandag presentation on the council agenda in the very near future. Such presentation has been afforded to surrounding communities. A question could be asked: Why are Vista residents being excluded? The community must have a say in any decision.
Your time is up, thank you. Rebecca Medici, followed by Pat McFarlane, followed by Joshua Tienda.
Mayor Ritter, City Council. I recently moved to District 3 so that I could walk to work. So I'm one of the lucky few who lives and works in Vista, but I look forward to a time when public transit is more accessible, and the roads are less congested because we have public transportation. Adding lanes to freeways has been proven not to help, as it just induces additional traffic. As a previous speaker said, if you build it, more cars will come, and it won't help Vista commuters. I've read some of the plans for Big Five Move strategy, and they look like an amazing way to cut down on emissions and travel without the maddening frustration of driving. But I would like more information, and having Mayor Ritter decide for us that we don't need the Sandag presentation is high-handed and anti-democratic. Every other city in North County is having the Sandag presentation. Please reconsider. Do not send that letter, and have the Sandag presentation in Vista, so that we can really have a dialogue and a voice. Thank you.
Pat McFarlane, followed by Joshua Tienda, followed by Katie Melendez.
I'm new to this community, and I think we need to know about the proposal for public transportation that Sandag is developing. And I see that as an opportunity to give us a choice in how we get from here to there in San Diego. I come from a town where there is transportation possibilities that we can choose, and I think it's very nice to have that. And I find that bus transportation has a lot of advantages, especially when I was a student, because we had parking problems, and we, I saved all the parking money by using the bus. And now, I'm a 93-year-old woman, and 94 in July, and planning to give up my driver's license when I reach 95, for the good of everybody. I know I'm not the only older person that's in Vista. And some of us have to face this kind of decision about what we're going to do when we lose our license. We have people in our communities not able to drive for health reasons, for being too old or too young, and for some, it's because they can't afford to maintain a car and the expense that goes with it. So how you decide will affect the quality of life for those of us who can't be running up and down the freeway in a car. In addition to all of that, we all benefit when we're not breathing the gas emissions from the cars. So for health reasons, if nothing else, let's take a look at what we can do to make it a better environment here, for all the people, and not just for some.
Thank you. Josh, I don't see Joshua Tienda, he's, I don't see him here, so he must have gone home. Katie Melendez, followed by Kathleen Moscato, followed by Nancy Oshley.
Hi, good evening, Council and Mayor. My name's Katie Melendez. I am a social worker in Vista and a lifelong Vista resident. I think that as a city, we ought to give public transit the same opportunity we give other public spaces, like parks and libraries. If we had a park, and it was a center for trash, and crime, and ugly landscaping, and the people in the city didn't visit the park and never used the park, would we turn around and say that parks don't have valuable community use? Of course not. We would solicit input from the community, we would invest into the park, and it would eventually become a thriving community center, and turn around something that wasn't used as often, and make it more useful to the community. And the same goes with public transportation. Do not assume that a lack of ridership means that public transportation is not valuable in North County. The reason why there is such a lack of ridership in North County is because we have an efficiency problem. And we have an efficiency problem with our transit because we haven't invested in transit. So when we invest in public transit to meet demand, we will have an increase in ridership, as we've seen through other cities throughout San Diego, and throughout the state of California. There was a comment made earlier that we don't have a need for public transit because we don't have the same density in North County as we do in central San Diego. But I don't know about you, I grew up here, and I've seen a lot of changes, and there's been a lot of density and a lot of growth, which means that our public transit has to match that. So to close, I want to say that my experience as a young person and a social worker, living and working in Vista, has shown to me that my peers and my clients, some of who report that it takes them three hours to get to their job every day on public transit, which I think is unacceptable for a poor working-class person to have to take three hours to get to their job. I think that from those stories, those interactions with my friends and with my clients, I've learned that the community has an interest in investing in public transit, but we need our leadership to do the same. And it's hard to imagine wanting to invest in public transit when you yourself don't take public transit. So I would encourage more soliciting from the community, more community forums, more outreach, including a presentation from Sandag, so that we can get more community input, because I'm sure that you would see there's an interest in public transit in North County. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Moscato, followed by Nancy Oshley, followed by Linda Wellens.
Mayor, Councilmembers. My name's Kathleen Moscato. I am a resident of District 3 here in Vista since 1997. I do not support the Vista City Council or the mayor sending a letter to the Executive Director of Sandag opposing the idea of shifting funds from freeway projects to, or road projects to transit projects. I was never asked for any feedback on, regarding this matter. And remember, I am a city resident. I had no idea that the City Council turned down a Sandag presentation, although all the other counties in North County, I mean, all the other cities in North County have been allowed, are being given the opportunity to watch this. I was not asked for any input regarding solutions. I was not informed about the solutions available. When I was asked during the Climate Action Plan workshops that I took the time to attend, I singled out the improvement of transit systems, along with many, many, many other Vista city residents, as imperative for reducing greenhouse gas emissions and improving the quality of life for Vista residents, for me and my family. Every city in North County is having a Five Big Moves strategy presentation, except for Vista. They will learn about creating transportation choices, they will learn about our future transportation system, they will learn about evaluating projects, and they will learn about funding our transportation system, emerging technologies, and regional parking management toolbox, and mobility hubs. Vista has done such a great job at turning our downtown into a vital place to be, but parking down there is horrible, and getting down there, living off of Melrose, is even worse. As a Vista resident, I choose not to go downtown on the weekends because of the traffic, and because there is no transit to help me get there, and it is not safe to ride my bike. Improved transit is actually a boon for economy. The San Diego Chamber of Commerce supports the Big Five Moves strategies, and once again, as other people have said, if transit was easier to use here, we would use it. We will be better connected to jobs and businesses throughout the county. We will be connected, and convenient transit makes cities more livable, making that city more attractive to businesses. I am a resident of the city of Vista. I want to know that the City Council and the mayor are being transparent and helping to educate its residents to what the options are out there. I also know that 2004, the year that the decision to widen the roads and freeways and happen, is technologically speaking, might as well have been in 1955. We are in the year of 2019, and we need to act like it. The amount of greenhouse gases attributed to this transportation problem we are living is going to kill us.
Thank you. Nancy Oshley, followed by Lisa Wellens, followed by Ann Force.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Nancy Oshley, and I'm a third-year resident of Vista. June 3rd, Del Mar. June 11th, San Marcos. June 12th, Solana Beach. June 18th, Carlsbad. July 10th, Encinitas. August 7th, Oceanside. I guess if I want to see a Sandag presentation, I'd better go to another city council, since Vista wasn't included on that list. I hope that the council will take away from what we've all been saying, that transparency would include having a Sandag presentation, so that the city can see what this is all about. And I personally am 100% in favor of taking the Transnet taxes and transferring them over to the Big Five Moves Plan. There really isn't any details to it yet, it's still in its planning stages, and when they talk about complete corridors, I am completely confident that they'll come up with a better solution than what we came up with in 2004. Because as people have said before, things change. Technology has changed, and we need to change, we need to plan for the future, and not for 2004. So, thank you, and please take note.
Lisa Wellens, followed by Ann Force, followed by Frank Painter.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I'm going to go fast. I'm here to ask you not to send this letter. Keeping this promise for the sake of keeping a promise, in what could be a bad one, is a mistake. Level heads, curiosity, and remaining at the table would serve us better. This is a time to be intrepid. We all know that Sandag and its former executive director ran into some trouble when they realized that the Transnet tax wasn't going to bring in the kind of money they expected. In fact, it was billions short. I bring this up because in hindsight, had you and other board members known that it wouldn't be enough to pay for all these projects, some of these projects would probably not be on the table in the first place. Sandag must shift priorities toward transit and active transportation to maintain the region's ability to compete for federal and state transportation funds. By placing a greater priority on long-term greenhouse gas reductions to align with state goals and regional equity, Sandag can ensure the region will attract maximum federal and state revenues, and drive economic growth and overall sustainability. I think that it would be prudent to go back to the drawing board and see how we can salvage this, and that what Mr. Akkara and Sandag staff have done, no more throwing good money after bad. Roads will continue to be important, but we don't have a road Roads will continue to be important, but we don't have a road problem. We have a commuting problem, we have a traffic jam problem, and you can't fix that no matter how wide you make a road. In fact, due to induced demand, the wider you make the road, the more drivers you induce to use it. The only option is to give us alternatives, fast, convenient alternatives, so we can ditch our car for our daily commute if we wish. The Five Big Moves has nothing to do with road maintenance, roads will continue to be maintained. These are scare tactics. This letter reads more like it comes from the county, not the densely populated city of Vista. The county supervisors are throwing everything at this to make people worried. Again, this is a time for our city leaders to be intrepid. How about we start by having Sandag come up here, give their presentation like they're doing for other cities, then let's talk, seriously, let's talk together about what our future is going to be like. You have some great input from what we already gave at the Climate Action Plan workshops regarding transportation. Remember, the Five Big Moves Transit Strategy is just a strategy. No need to walk away from the table now. Don't leave us out of this conversation and chance to be part of a big vision. And if there's anyone from Sandag who is here, or listening, or watching the live stream, don't leave Vista behind. The people get it. We want you to come up here and give us the presentation. So, let's have a presentation, or better yet, a presentation and a chance for the public to ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Force, followed by Frank Painter, followed by Anna Ardon.
I'm also a Vista resident. I want to say, over 10 million rides each year are provided by North County Transit. Two and a half million rides are by the Sprinter. Many young people use this mode of transit because they cannot afford to buy cars or auto insurance as they pursue their educations and work part-time. Young people are flexible and forward-thinking, and they want lower emissions and have more safe, energy-efficient mass transit to carry us into the future. And as a senior citizen, I want that, too. I hope the city of Vista will rethink its current position, invite Sandag to give a presentation in Vista, and support modernizing our transit system with the high-tech coordination of Sandag's Five Big Moves proposal, and thank you.
Thank you. Frank Painter, followed by Anna Ardon, followed by Kathleen Boyle.
Hi, I'm Frank Painter, and I'm a Vista resident. In fact, I guess it'll be seven years next month. I'm going to be winging it because the mayor is. The county board of supervisors and the Vista government seem to have a difficult time working with Sandag. I don't know why this is, because Sandag offers us as a county a real opportunity to make the changes that are going to be needed in the 21st century. We're going, yeah, this is, the thing is that there's, I went on the web and I found the Five Big Moves. Ideas for how to visualize and effect the changes that these Five Big Moves represent should be welcomed here, and they should be discussed, and I have to ask why we, as a community, would withdraw from that discussion. I'd like to ask Supervisor Desmond--
No, you're talking, excuse me, but you're talking to us.
Oh, okay. I'd like you to ask Supervisor Desmond. He's an airplane driver, and he also happens to be spending, I mean, he's into public So, I don't exactly get why he wouldn't support this, but I got confused. At sdforward.com, sdforward.com/fivem moveds, the people of Vista can see what you're depriving them of. So, that opportunity is there to get the information. And I don't know what else to say, except that you're blown in. You know, we have to work with Sandag. We don't have to reject them at every turn.
Thank you. Anna Ardon, followed by Kathleen Boyle, followed by Diane Nygaard.
My name is Anna Ardon, and I'm a Vista resident and an educator with Universidad Popular, a community initiative that promotes education and civic engagement. I am here to add my voice to many Vista residents who support Sandag's new vision. The Big Five Moves aims to transform the region's transportation infrastructure to be more interconnected, more inclusive, and more attuned to the 21st century. The idea that highways and freeways should be our main mode of transportation is obsolete. Highway and freeway expansion not only creates more traffic congestion, but also contributes to poor air quality and gas emissions. We need to ensure our region has many alternative ways to travel. We have documented in our, through Universidad Popular, that low-income residents, rural communities, youth and elders rely heavily on public transportation to travel every single day. For the past year and a half, Universidad Popular has held multiple community conversations to discuss transportation challenges in our local communities. In practically every single meeting we've had, community residents have declared that they would choose public transit over driving if there were safer walking routes and more sidewalks, if buses were more affordable and more frequent, especially in the rural areas of our region. It is disappointing that Sandag's new plan is facing backlash and opposition from our own city council. Even more disappointing is that Vista is the only city in North County that rejected the opportunity for Sandag to provide information to the community about this new transportation vision. Every other city has scheduled a presentation by Sandag in the coming months, as many of the residents here have expressed, and City Council cannot make an educated decision about shifting transnet funds without first informing the public. My work in the community is to promote education. I want to promote education to all of you tonight. I urge the council to open the doors for Sandag to inform us about the new transportation vision before making any decisions. The residents of Vista are entitled to be informed. Let us not choose to be ignorant. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Diane Nygaard, followed by Corey Schumacher.
Two million years ago, early hominids, Homo habilis by name, used the flake stone tool for everything. They survived on this earth for over a million years, longer than we have survived so far. But they never changed their tool or got another tool, it was that tool. They did not adapt, they did not evolve, and they are no more. They went extinct. Much later, another hominid, more famous, Neanderthal, also survived on this planet Earth for longer than we have so far. They are now recognized as not being some dumb cave people. They had symbolic art, they controlled fire, they buried their dead, they even cared for their sick, which means they were better than Homo sapiens. They used, their tool was a spear, a handheld spear that they used to thrust into the woolly mammoths and other large prey. For hundreds of thousands of years without change, they never threw the spear, it was always like this. When sapiens came along, throwing spears and using new-fangled spear chuckers, Neanderthals were left behind. They did not adapt, they did not evolve, they went extinct. Adaptation is what we humans do, or should do. Why should we hold on to sharpened rocks, handheld spears, or transportation strategies that have been shown not to work? Adding lanes to freeways, the traffic gets worse. We've seen that, we have data on that. HOV lanes do not reduce traffic. We have data on that, we have seen that. We must adapt by improving and developing mass transit options. If few people are using mass transit, we can't throw up our hands and give up. Find out why. It might cost too much, it might not be reliable. Many people don't have the luxury of arriving late to work without repercussions. It might not be convenient. We can solve these problems. Shuttle vans and buses could bring people from more distant locations like Valley Center down to a rail line. Special Express buses are used in many cities for commuters. They only might make two, three stops from here to downtown. Now, Sandag is interested in exploring new transit options, more in line with the current realities of San Diego County. But our mayor wants to cut us off from even hearing about these ideas. Why? Are we too weak or simple-minded to hear new ideas? Why the censorship? What kind of government body censors information? We don't want that kind of government for our city. We must evolve and adapt, or we will go extinct.
Diane Nygaard, followed by Corey Schumacher, followed by Meryl Leeds.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calaveras. We're a North County Conservation Group. This is a regional issue. It affects all of us. We all want a transportation plan that works, that'll relieve our traffic congestion, that we can pay for, and that complies with state law. Unfortunately, we all know now that that 2004 Sandag plan made all kinds of promises they could not keep. It will not solve our traffic congestion. Study after study shows, if we widen our freeways, in a few years, we spent millions of dollars, we have a wider freeway with the same traffic congestion that we started. We do not have the money to pay for all those promises that were made. Supervisor Desmond identified the billions of dollars, that this plan is short. We cannot keep all of those promises, and it will not meet state requirements to reduce our greenhouse gases. Sandag's integrity has already plummeted over a year ago, that's why there's been a major shakeup. There was changes in state law, there's a new director, there's a new direction, there's a new vision, there's a new commitment to really do it right. You, just earlier tonight, you adopted a balanced budget for the city. Won't you require the same thing of Sandag? Do a plan that can be done within the funds that are available for this region. No more empty promises. So, we urge you, let the planning process forward. You will have an opportunity to pitch your favorite projects, the same as every other city. Hear from everybody, look at the numbers, let's all come up with a plan that works for this region, that we can afford, that gives real transportation choices to people, that serves everybody and not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey Schumacher, followed by Meryl Leeds, followed by Nikki Leeds.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council members. I am here tonight in my capacity as a representative from Assemblymember Tasha Berner Horvath's office, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I think what the mayor has brought forward is a deep recognition that this is one of the most important conversations that we will have for our county and for our future moving forward. The two pieces that you've heard a little bit about that I wanted to zero in on here are the $22.1 billion shortfall that the current 2004 transnet plan is currently short of what was promised. And one of the things that's really important to also take into consideration with the transnet ordinance that voters voted on in 2004, was that the voters, in their wisdom, understood that a 40-year time period would need some flexibility for decision-makers to revisit, given how much was changing and how much our region was planning on changing. So, inbuilt into that ordinance is the opportunity for Sandag board members to revisit, which is this exact moment that we're looking at here, as we're seeking to, as the region is seeking to revisit the regional transportation plan that, again, is $22.1 billion short of what was told to the voters that we would receive. And also, given that, we need to revisit the plan specifically because it is legally insufficient. So, as a representative of the Assemblymember, those two pieces are incredibly important. We want for our cities to be legally compliant, we want for our county to be legally compliant, and we also want to ensure that the plan that we have moving forward meets the expectations. With $22.1 billion in shortfall currently, Sandag Board is forced to revisit this no matter what. And this plan that's been put forward, the strategic vision that's currently being put forward, there's no details in it, very specifically, no details. And so, as Supervisor Cox said during the similar conversation at the county, this action is premature. There's a process to this, the Sandag Board will be revisiting this and going into the detail, and I would argue that the presentation by Sandag, given to your community, would help to direct your Sandag board members in that conversation in a very effective way. So, to wrap up, the vision that's being presented is about meaningful choices, about giving our county meaningful choices when it comes to their transportation choices. I would, we would encourage this body to require the Sandag presentation to be brought forward, and to prudently wait to submit any decision at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Meryl Leeds, followed by Nikki Leeds, followed by Susan Davidson.
Good evening, Vista Council. My name is Meryl Leeds, and tonight I will be discussing the future of transportation in San Diego County. As we know, the well-being of our planet depends on bold, worldwide mobilization over the next 11 years to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, primarily through reduction in the burning of fossil fuels. Here in San Diego County, transportation accounts for roughly 50% of CO2 going into the atmosphere. To mitigate this, visionary city planners are now replacing the outdated 20th-century transportation paradigm of personal automobile travel. While there are numerous ways in which a new transportation model will benefit all of us, tonight I would like to focus on a few less often discussed points. Induced demand and car sharing/ride sharing. Induced demand refers to the idea that increasing roadway capacity encourages more people to drive, thus failing to improve congestion. Consistent validation of this phenomenon is now causing many jurisdictions to scrap highway widening plans altogether. Car sharing and ride sharing already have, are already having a profound effect on the entire way people and goods travel from point A to point B, based on converging technological and social trends. This new ecosystem of mobility will offer faster, cheaper, cleaner, safer, and more efficient means of travel by moving away from personally-owned vehicles and towards a future system centered around shared mobility, ultimately resulting in fewer vehicles on the road. Taking these two factors into consideration, the 2004 transnet plan to add HOV lanes to Highway 78 at an estimated cost of $495 billion, million, is absolutely unwarranted and outdated. Instead, these funds should be allocated toward the creation of an interconnected mass transit system powered by renewable energy, along with unified infrastructure of bicycle and pedestrian rights of way. I applaud Sandag and its new leadership in modernizing San Diego's transportation plan in step with other forward-thinking jurisdictions. The transportation future is now barreling toward us at an accelerating pace, and its next stop is Vista, California. I urge you to abandon the outdated 20th-century carbon-spewing model and step aboard a shiny, clean transportation system which embraces this timely opportunity to reshape the future of transportation, so deserved by San Diego County's inhabitants. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Leeds, followed by Susan Davidson, followed by Cindy Oduaman.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Leeds. Tonight I will discuss Mayor Ritter's recent letter to the Executive Director of Sandag, Mr. Icarat, regarding the regional plan to reduce traffic congestion and CO2 emissions in the San Diego region. In the second paragraph of her letter, Mayor Ritter writes, "In November 2004, voters approved Proposition A, a 40-year extension of a half-cent transportation sales tax, also known as transnet. Admittedly, transnet has a checkered past, and we now have an opportunity to work with the new Executive Director, Mr. Icarat, who understands that business as usual is not acceptable. Freeway expansion is not acceptable. And to cling to a 16-year-old promise that no longer applies is irresponsible." While we know that many of transnet projects were already completed by 2000-- While we know that many of Transnet projects were already completed by 2012, Mayor Ritter and others on the council still take objection to the new transportation discussion known as Five Bold Moves. And I hope that with further consideration, the dissenters on the council will approach the discussion with a desire to collaborate on 21st-century transportation that boldly addresses the need to move people and dramatically and rapidly reduce greenhouse emissions. While I appreciate Mayor Ritter's nod to reduce greenhouse emissions in her letter to Sandeg, her mention of Transnet upholding its promise to expand the 78 freeway, adding HOV lanes is not a recommendation that would solve the problem but would rather contribute to further congestion and increase greenhouse gases. As you can see on the screen, if you build more lanes, they will be filled in with more cars. Anyone who drives the 405 freeway understands this. In Mayor Ritter's opposition letter to Sandeg, she says, "If adopted, this reallocation of Transnet funding will degrade the confidence of San Diego voters and contribute to worsening traffic conditions throughout the region." With regard to the assertion that it will degrade voter confidence, I assert that voter confidence is only improved when elected officials are transparent and adapt policy to match the need. Mayor Ritter, it is my understanding that you are refusing to allow Sandeg to present its transportation discussion plan to the council and the public, and by refusing to allow Sandeg to prevent its plan as an agenda item in open council-public session. This would only serve to further erode voter confidence. Therefore, as Ms. Rigby said tonight, she wants the city residents to be fully informed, so I ask that the council make a motion tonight to invite Sandeg to present the Five Bold Moves. Please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Davidson, followed by Cindy Odo-Amen, followed by Matt. I don't have any information on Matt, except the name Matt.
Susan Davidson, Long Term Vista resident. I want to say thank you, Mary and councilmembers, for the ability to be here. Sandeg hired their new Executive Director with the purpose of moving our region forward after years of stagnation into a modern holistic transportation strategy. This individual is pursued on purpose for what he has done in Los Angeles. Sandeg's vision has five big moves: complete corridors, transit, mobility hubs, flexible fleets, and the next operating system. Five different pieces in their plan. You're very correct that we don't have enough detail yet, but we as residents actually don't know anything yet, so we're asking for more information. And you're right, we need more detail. We need to understand what's happening. So we currently ask before the City Council that you do not send the letter to Sandeg at this time, please, but that you actually request Sandeg to provide a presentation to a city and the city residents, so we can actually see what the five big moves are, ask our questions, be transparent, and participate in this process. You've seen us fill this room. It's important to us. So we request that you actually make a motion and bring the presentation to the City of We also ask one more thing. We ask that the City Council actually serve as collaborators. There's a really interesting article that came out about MTS looking for money versus Sandeg's money versus the letter that's been written by the council. And we're watching different agencies in our region tug against each other for money. And one of the conversations earlier, Councilwoman Franklin, you had talking about worrying about not enough money. Can we change our vision and start to collaborate and figure out how we're going to play well together? Instead of having MTS tag and fight with Sandeg, instead of us pushing back, asking for the freeway money, can we actually come together and collaborate? That's our request. You are our visioners. We put you here on purpose because you actually look for the future. You listen to us, and you put things in place that protect us and actually help us as a community. So that's what we're asking for. Please collaborate and bring this to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Odo-Amen, followed by Matt, followed by Carol Jeffries.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Odo-Amen. I live, I have lived in Vista for a long, long time. Thank you for this opportunity to share my concern. I am grateful that Mayor has placed this issue of transferring Transnet fund on the agenda. There are a few concerns that I have with opposing the transfer. First, how does this widening of 78 affect the commute hour traffic problem in my neighborhood? When widening of 76 occurred, the traffic in my community has grown exponentially worse. My fear is that widening of 78 may create an additional burden to our congested streets. If you ask anyone in our district what his or her number-one concern is, he or she will say that our community suffers from a crushing commute hour traffic, making our streets unsafe and unhealthy. Second, how can we give our support to Mayor's letter without any discussion regarding the new transportation strategy developed by Sandeg? I request that the regional planners come and present their new regional transportation plans to the council. Third, my broadly, more broadly, does the current promise to expand 78 meet the regional and state climate target by 2050? The answer is no. According to the Environmental Impact Report, current regional Transnet Plan would cause significant irreversible and unavoidable impact to the environment. Finally, a county of 3.3 million people, a fifth-most populated county in the nation, is at a crucial crossroad. My concern is if we oppose the new transportation vision by opposing the transfer of fund, will we get left behind and not get connected to the transit network of the future? I urge you to leave promise of widening 78, which will not be the answer to in very near future. We need to be open to an alternative idea when simply adding more lanes have not worked to meet the ever-increasing transportation demands. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, followed by Carol Jeffries.
Hello, City Council. I do kind of feel like Sandeg is on a bit of a losing streak, and I have kind of lost some trust in the organization to be efficient. I think it's kind of too big. There's too many entities, municipalities, interests, personalities, and the problems are just too big for the organization to solve. I have lost some trust in them. One guy who I do have trust in is Sam, Sam, the Chief Traffic Engineer. I met with him, and he's a very bright guy and a lot of good ideas. And I wish we could just take the resources that are ours in Sandeg and just give them to Sam, because I know he'd have a lot more efficient uses for those resources. Yeah, speaking of wishes, you know, I wish we did have more mass transit already, just across San Diego, because it would work. My concern is that if we put these, you know, big $5 billion move projects, or whatever you want to call them, into effect, by the time they get completed, there's going to be a new mass product out on the market, and that'd be the driverless electric vehicle. I mean, I don't see how you're going to beat that. It's able to take you directly from point A, directly to point B, and it can do it net-neutral, using renewable energy sources. I think once people sort of get used to that big idea that is far away, there's no going back. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Jeffries.
So much to say. I think we need to move forward smartly into this uncertain future that we're facing with dignity and not kicking and screaming and railing against every new change. Mass transit is essential for our growing population and for our environment. You said that we don't have the density, but you're doing a damn good job of creating density in our little city here. So there's going to be density, and people need this. Opposing any forward movement on environmental issues isn't a good look. It's not helpful. It's not supported by your constituents. We need to make mass transit an easy adjustment for future generations, even if you don't want to use the mass transit. We have a lot of kids out there who are scared to death because we are handing them this dire situation, and we're all scared, too. We need to save this earth. We need to give our citizens the services that enrich their lives, and, I don't know, again, we're all scared, and we can ignore it, or we can go forward with hope. And I think that's what we need to do, and I hope you'll choose that. I really look forward to a future where people are complaining about how crowded the mass transit is. Thank you.
And that was our last speaker. So, and I took some notes. I just, first, I want you to know, I'm not against mass transit. I'm not against that at all. I think that's a good idea in the future. I think it will, it will come to that. But meanwhile, you're worried about the air pollution, and the cars idling in San Marcos and idling all the way to the 15 at night and on both ends of the freeway does not help air pollution. This plan, this grand plan that they have in Sandeg, is not going to happen for several years. They don't have the money, first. And second, by the time they do the planning and all of that, it's going to be years before they start doing this. And part of it is that it goes, most of the money will go to San Diego. I don't know how you think the mass transit's going to come here. If they, they're talking, they could double-track the Sprinter, and they can put 15-minute headways in, but how's that going to help you get to work? And people get to, you know, how's that going to help all the goods get to our stores? Someday, maybe they'll be delivered by drones. I don't know. But putting, I've heard that by, in 40 years or so, I don't know exactly the year, that it's going to be mandatory, electric vehicles will be mandatory in California. If we put an extra lane on the freeway, possibly that, they're talking about putting the charger in the lane, chargers in the lane, so that when you drive in that lane, you can charge your car rather than have to plug in. If they put new lanes on the freeways, those could be the lanes that they could, they could put the infrastructure in to make them be charging lanes. So, and meanwhile, until we get there, you can stop the cars from idling on the freeway and creating problems with the ozone layer and creating the pollution. In the future, if it all gets really nice and the cars all drive themselves, use one of the lanes for bicycles or for scooters or something, you know, they can be used for something else. But temporarily, for the next few years, you've got people that are going to sit on the freeway, and they're going to idle all the way at both ends. So I made a promise, when people voted, I make a promise to lockbox money. We did it with the City Hall. We lockboxed the money for the projects that we said we'd spend it for. We lockboxed that money, and our 78 deserves to be fixed. And I know you think, oh, mass transit's wonderful. You've got to get the goods here and things. Goods don't come in mass transit. You've got to get, the stores need to have their deliveries and things. That all comes on the freeway. So I don't know. So I'm not against mass transit. I'm waiting when the time is right. And I'm not denying you the, listening to the grand plans there, but they're grand plans right now. And when that's available, when they come up with a plan or they do it, we'll certainly have it here, and everybody can hear what it is. But it's also going to include a tax, that you're going to have to be willing to vote for another tax, and so I don't know how willing you are. Cars caught pause air pollution, so do the trucks that are on the road, and there's lots of trucks that idle on the freeway also, so I just want you to know that. Also, we don't have a whole big voice down at Sandeg. Vista doesn't. And a lot of the people that agree, all of the North County mayors that are having the presentations also agree that we are all in agreement about the money from Transnet. None of us, the five cities, want to take that money and put it into transit. We want to continue to fix the freeways that are there. So I just want you to know that, that I work with all the mayors of all the cities, and that's how we feel about it. Let me see if I've got, everybody else, I'm sure, has a lot to say about that, but I just want you to know that if you want the presentation, fine, but it's all pie in the sky. It's all about their Grand Central Station to get you to the airport. It's all about tunneling under and overhead lanes, which I don't think we're ready for up here. If you tell people they're going to put overhead lanes down the freeway, they're not going to be happy. That, you know, I don't know what the plans are, but they're kind of pie in the sky. When they get more definite, then we're happy to bring it to you guys and present it to you. So meanwhile, I'll get off my soapbox, and I have people, start with Karina Contreras, Councilwoman Contreras.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came and spoke. It's been a rather long meeting, and I'm sure we all have a lot to say. So I just kind of want to divide my comments into two categories. One is where we are and then the reality that we face. So where we're at right now is, one, I don't think we have enough information. I know I was really upset in that no one ever asked me if I wanted a presentation, and simply because, you know, probably I was in the minority of that. So I do want a presentation. I think it's really important, you know, we established earlier in a different discussion item, how important it is for us to get as much information as possible, and not, this information isn't only for this body. When we have presentations, it's also really for the public. So I understand the frustration of how this looks as far as transparency goes. But, you know, I would love to have Sandeg in front of me, because I would like to yell at them a little bit. So I think it's important to bring them forward, and we can't really have a well-informed discussion without that agency being before us. I don't have the pleasure to serve on Sandeg. I actually don't have the pleasure to serve on any board at this moment. So, you know, for me, as a council member, it is extremely important for this information to be brought before me. Now, another part, you know, the 2004 plan, you know, that tax is just, there's not enough money. There's not enough money to cover all those promises. And to me, it almost seems like there's more, that this political body is more upset about the transferring of funds than they showed when the blatant corruption was exposed at Sandeg. And that's a little frustrating for me, not just as a council member, but as a resident of the City of Vista. So, you know, we have to be realistic as to what we have before us. We don't have enough money. You know, I don't approve of the way that this letter is written. I think the approach makes us seem kind of like a toddler, you know, screaming about the 78. We all know the 78 is bad. We know that it's bad. However, regardless of us sending an opposition letter, Sandeg is not going to pay attention to us, right? What I see really missing in this letter is, okay, a recognition that the 78 is horrible in that by the time we approve any of these mass transit, you know, maybe we should look at how we can improve the 78, because that might be a little bit faster than creating this macro infrastructure. Okay, I would accept that in the letter. But right now, as it reads, it is just a lot of complaints, and we're just saying, well, you better give us the money for the 78. That money is not, we don't have it. Sandeg does not have that money. So I think it's really important for us to look at the reality of the situation, and as a city, bring forward solutions that we have, right? And hold our taxpayer money to a greater level of accountability than it's been done before. You know, we talked about, some individuals talked about state-mandated greenhouse gas emissions, and that's a conversation we've had during our Climate Action Plan. But the reality, again, of this situation is that that 2004 plan, one, it's completely inadequate, and, two, we don't have the funds, and, three, it doesn't meet state regulations for greenhouse gas emission reductions. And I'm glad to hear that we're, you know, talking about idling cars and how terrible that is. I know a group of people that would be really thrilled to come before this body and talk to us about how we can move forward with no idling, so that could probably be a separate discussion in the future. Another thing is that we have this state-mandated transit-oriented development, right? And I've, and we've, I've heard tons of complaints by this body about that state-mandated transit-oriented development and how, you know, it's impacting us. The thing is that that density is going to increase in transit areas that have transit near that development. So if we continue to increase the density there, and we're not trying to figure out how we build a macro transit center where we can have micro mobility connect to macro transportation, public transportation, then... transportation, public transportation, then we are really not doing the future a favor here. We have to take that in mind. So, I want to be able to elevate our complaints and really frame it in a different way, right? I think that Sandag would be probably more receptive to an approach that says, listen, again, this vision is going to take a while to get there. So, in, in the interim, you know, can we get some concessions about the 78? But not completely rejecting the idea that we have to transfer funds into a, a solution that's a lot more viable, right? And so, that's a problem that I have. And then, you know, one thing that some of the, one of the speakers brought up was the aging population. I mean, just here in California, we're, we're looking at the senior population doubling, you know, and it's something that I know I've discussed up here. If we are having a difficult time, you know, even providing the right nutrition for our seniors and we're not looking at how to reduce alienation and isolation and how mobility plays into that, I think we're doing our community a disservice. So, we really need to be able to move goods and people and services a lot faster. And I agree, the 78 is a complete mess. For the, my, almost my entire professional career, I've had to utilize the 78 during the worst times. But I know that if we add another lane, regardless if it's HOV, it's, we're not holding ourselves accountable to the taxpayers by saying that this is a solution when we absolutely know it's not. We absolutely know it's not. I mean, you know, the, I, I think one of the things that upsets, that upsets me the most about this is how political this discussion item is. Because it really, and, and I don't know how much the public knows about the, the history behind, you know, these opposition letters, but at the end of the day, I don't like having political discussions up here. And if, if we were sincere about our grievances and solutions, then we would allow the public to have their time to review this information for us to review it. And so, you know, with that said, I make a motion to suspend voting on the proposed opposition letter until a Sandag presentation on the big, on the five big moves is brought before both the council and the residents of Vista so that we can have a more informed discussion and higher potential for better decision-making by this council body. So, I don't know if, if anyone wants to second that, but that's how I feel about this.
Let me just read you this from the Sandag meetings about, about the money in the Transnet. Approximately $21.4 billion in funding is reasonably expected to be available to finish the Transnet major corridors. These estimates show that the cost to complete all remaining projects is about $26.7 billion. That's 21.4 is what they're expected, 26.7 plus another 4.5 for debt service for a total need of $31.2 billion. Sandag estimates that approximately $9.8 billion from new or expanded sources will be needed to complete all remaining Transnet corridor projects by 2048. That means that every Transnet dollar at Sandag would need to bring in $4.20 in match funding, they said, which is, right now, they, our history is bringing $3 in matching funds. I, but I say it's, we get matching funds often on Transnet. For a lot of the projects, I mean, I've been down there for a long time. We always get matching funds from feds or from the state on different things. So, I don't think it's impossible to finish these projects and have, and get that money in the end. I, I don't believe that. So...
I, I remember reading that letter or that article and it said that there was no way that $3 getting matched at $3 is already difficult to assess. So, anything higher than that is just a pie in the sky.
The agency's history is $3 in matching funds.
It is, it's the history, but that's the maximum, essentially. And so, if we're looking at, you know, trying to bring $4 in, I mean, that's a huge difference. And, and, you know, this just, so, we had a discussion about, you know, Bub Williamson Park and people were really upset that we had this design that was completely brought forth to the community without any community input. And we all agreed up here that that was not a good way to conduct business. This is exactly the same thing.
I'm not saying that we can't bring the ideas back for that. I'm just saying, transit was promised to people. They voted it. I, I don't think it's right when people vote something and you promise something to them and then you change it. And that's, it's not right. That's not what was voted. 66 and two-thirds people voted and the city voted for Transnet. And so, I, I, that's, that to me is, you make a pact with them that yes, that that's our pact, that we, that you voted that and approved that. How can you change that? How can you just say to them?
The mechanism is built into the agency and we've heard, you know, how to change it. And, and these are great questions. I, I really...
Promise, that's a promise.
No, and I, and I really agree with you. These are great questions to have. And that's why I want this body before, I want Sandag before me because I have a lot of questions for them. And I think that they are better equipped to answer these questions than this body is. Especially because my faith in Sandag is really low. And a part of that is that we had oversight of this extreme corruption that was happening. And the fact that in 2016, you know, they wanted to bring forward another tax because they knew that the previous tax wasn't going to be able to fund all these projects. And so, I mean, and everything had to blow up in order for us to get to this point, essentially. I mean, I just don't understand how, with all the corruption that happened at Sandag, we can still talk about a plan that was voted in 2004 that has, there is a mechanism to reallocate the funds and look at a proposed vision that really holds accountable the remaining tax dollars.
Okay, let's, let's hear from the others, let's hear from our other council members.
There is a motion on the floor.
Deputy Mayor Franklin. Well, nobody has seconded it. Deputy Mayor Franklin?
So, I used to wake up at the end of the line, last train. Anybody here ever done that?
No. I usually get off before we're at the end of the line.
Yeah, you're supposed to, but when you spend three hours getting to work, you tend to fall asleep on the way home, especially when you work late. So, I would, at the end of a long night, I'd go, I don't know, 10:30, I'd get the last train. And, I mean, it was the last one and you'd wake up at the end of the line, cost me $100 to get a taxi cab to get home. I took mass transit for three years and I enjoyed it. I, I lived in Washington DC for almost a decade. Mass transit works very well there. I was just curious and so I took a look. And my, my commute was about 10 and a half miles. And I just took a look, to get 10 and a half miles into the interior of Carlsbad, it's about the same amount of time. It was an hour and 20 minutes in the NCTD system instead of an hour and 15 is what it took me. But I, I rode two buses and a train for years. Like I said, it took me an hour and 15 each way. So, two and a half hours I spent every day. And, you know, surprise, surprise, what I really wanted after three years of spending three hours, and I started to think, that's 15 hours a week. And I thought, man, that's a whole lot of time that I could be doing something else. And I wanted to have an automobile because I wanted the freedom to get home to my family. Are we against cars or are we against internal combustion engines? What are we really against? Do we know? I'm not sure we do. Because electric cars are here, the future is here, autonomous vehicles are here. I'm a strong supporter of public transportation. This is not a, this is not a question of whether or not we support public transportation. It's an important option for those in our community who can't afford an automobile. It's important to our local economy and it's important to those who don't have the ability to drive for whatever reason, because of age or infirmity or physical inability or, you know, those who choose not to. It's, it's great. You know, I'm honored to be our representative on the North County Transit District Board of Directors. And I, I strongly support a, a strong transit system. The cost of it is offset by the economic output that it creates. It's very important. But I always get really dirty looks from my colleagues on the NCTD Board of Directors and others when I remind them that Manhattan Island fits inside of Vista. They don't like to be reminded of that. Nor do they like to hear about the fact that New York started digging at subway tunnels during the Civil War. So, they got about 100 years head start on us in this region for building a light rail system. You know, at the, the end of the day, San Diego, Los Angeles, our whole Southern California metropolis was not built during the horse and buggy era. It was built during the automobile era. And so, we have sprawl. New York, Boston, Washington DC, all built around the horse and buggy. You couldn't get far even if you wanted to. Didn't matter, you know, how many horses you owned, you, it's only so far you could go. And so, you had a lot of compactness in the design of these cities. And so, transit tends to work pretty well there. But, I mean, my, my rough comparison, and I, you know, somebody's done better comparison than I have, but it takes about the same amount of time. Maybe it takes 10 minutes longer to get 10 miles here on public transportation. So, the, the issue, it's, it's a false imperative if we're being asked to consider this as a choice between abandoning public transportation. What we're talking about here is not our state income tax dollars. It's not our property tax dollars. This is an additional tax that voters elected to pay above and beyond all of the taxes we already pay in this very high tax state. And they were given a bill of goods, which is right here. This is the ballot item. And they were promised improvements. You know, we were, we were promised in Sandag and Transnet 1 that we would get the interchange with I-15 and, and 78. We were promised and, and it never happened. And then we were promised in 2004, again, that it would happen and it never happened. And so, when they came to us with Measure A in 2016 and they did come right here and gave a presentation, I knew they were liars. And I mean, when I say liars, I don't mean like they had made a couple of mistakes. I knew they were flat liars. And they're flat liars today. They are not going to give us anything. They don't care about us. They don't care about people who are trying to get home to their families. And they're more than happy to tell whatever lies are necessary and subvert the truth in any way to leave a legacy of something that's not thought through. Let me give you an example. The very last meeting of the NCTD Board of Directors, they came to us, they wanted NCTD, of which our agency is a partial owner, our city is a partial owner of the agency. They wanted us to spend $300,000 on a total, I think it was $800,000 program. And they were going to hire 12 passenger buses to get people where they were going in Carlsbad to solve the last mile. And the goal of the program was to get 50 more people on the coaster train every day. So, that's 100 trips, 50 in the morning and 50 at night. I got my Uber app out and I said, okay, ViaSat's the biggest employer in Carlsbad. And they wanted to go back and forth from the Point Seti Station. So, I said, okay, what does it cost on Uber at 5:10 PM to get from ViaSat back to the Point Seti Station? It's $10.24. I said, okay, so $10.24 times two, times the 50 riders, times five days a week, times 52 weeks in a year, $298,000. We could have bought everybody Uber for $298,000, but we spent $800,000 to try and get them onto a 12 passenger van. And I asked the other directors, I said, when's the last time you got on a 12 passenger van? Because my recollection of 12 passenger vans is they're usually not very comfortable and the people that work, you know, at the kind of jobs that Carlsbad has in its business park, probably not likely to get on those, you know? Now, it was only about $8.50 for Uber pool. So, if you want to be environmentally friendly, you share a car with two or three other commuters, now your costs are even lower. We're in such a zeal to create something that we used in San Francisco or Boston and it was wonderful and it really was. People live in Boston, you know, we, my wife and I traveled there a year or two ago. Wonderful metro system. But we want to recreate something that we experienced on the East Coast, but we don't have a horse and buggy city like those cities do. The infrastructure challenges here are unique and we're not really committed to the last mile. If we were committed to solving the last mile problem, then we would have taken that $800,000. By the way, Supervisor Desmond and I were the only ones to vote no on that harebrained scheme. But I say, why don't we take the $800,000 and spend it on autonomous vehicle infrastructure? One of the other members of the board said, we don't have infrastructure for autonomous vehicles. I said, that's the point. Let's take the $800,000 and create the infrastructure. Deaf ears, totally fell on deaf ears. Electric vehicles, clean burning, clean electric vehicles, they don't burn anything. They could be the future if we made a choice. Didn't hear anybody speak against clean electrical vehicles. I love the idea of a slot car. I mean, that's, which is basically what you're saying is a, you know, a brass rail on the highway, you know, and your car gets on top of it and it's connected the whole way. It's a great idea. It's a fantastic idea. I absolutely want to have Sandag, Madam Mayor, like you said, when they have a fully formed idea, let's get them in here. I want to hear it. We heard them out on Measure A, it was terrible. I yelled at them and I'm going to yell at them again when they get in front of us. I'm sure a couple of us will. Not the least of all is because I knew their numbers were a complete bunk, you know, and which was proven later. I mean, it was obvious to me, I only spent a year studying economics in college, but it was obvious to me that we weren't going to have a 30% increase in property, in the sales tax revenues. I mean, that was the dumbest thing I ever heard in my whole life. The, the state of California has failed us. They've invested huge amounts of money into transit programs that have yet to materialize. They take at least 10 times as much of your money as the city of Vista does in tax revenue. I represent people who want to come home and they want to be with their kids. They want to come home to their husbands and their wives. And I represent people who ride the train and the bus and their greatest ambition is to own an automobile so that they can have the freedom to be with their families too. And they aspire to it. And how do I know that to be the truth? How can I empirically prove it? Well, I can show you a line graph from NCTD and from MTS that shows you when the economy goes up, ridership goes down. Why is that? People have the money to afford an automobile and to pay for gas. They make a choice to have freedom. We all want freedom. That's nice for those of us who've got a lot of money to impose what we think could be good for other people. I don't want to do that. I want to listen to what they think's good for them. And I want to watch and look at the empirical data and learn things about the choices they make when they have the option. And I want to give them what they want because they didn't elect me to give them some harebrained vision. They elected me to give them what they want. This is such an important issue. I so appreciate your leadership on this, I, Madam Mayor. I so appreciate our supervisor being a leader on this. We're probably going to lose this battle at the end of the day, but I hope it won't be forgotten by the families that we represent, that we fought for them to have the freedom to be with their families, for them to enjoy a little bit more of the time that they work for. Because at the end of the day, we all, we all go to work every day and whether we love what we do or not, we really do it so we can come home and be with our families and enjoy our homes. That's what, you know, that's what this is all about. All that we do is about our families and being with them. And if I can help the people I represent get home to their families just a little bit sooner so they can enjoy that time, then I'm going to fight for it. We've got to fight for our highways. We've got to get the interchange with I-5 and, and 78. We've got to get the interchange with 15 and 78. We've got to finally deliver on those promises and whatever it takes to do that. And we should continue to invest in mass transit because it is part of the solution for the future. And someday, when the autonomous Uber shows up and takes me and I want to go downtown, if I could take, you don't think I wouldn't want to get on a train to go downtown? I go downtown once a week. I'd love to get on a, I'd take, I'd love to have a car come pick me up and, you know, it'd all be efficient. I want that to be the future.
And you can read all the way because it'll just drive you.
When I go to Los Angeles, I take the train if, if I can, you know? It's, it's a great solution. You know, I totally, totally believe it. But, Madam Mayor, what you said about the promise that was made on this ballot and about keeping this, people hate politicians. It's one of the things I hate about being a politician, even though, I don't know if, I guess we're politicians, we're city council people, but people don't trust us because we say one thing and do another. This is saying one thing and doing another if we don't keep the promise that was made to voters. And we got to stand up and we got to hold them accountable for taking this money that people thought was to fix the roads. people thought was to fix the roads, and now they want to reappropriate it. No. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Listening to the discussion tonight and hearing all of the speakers, I want to say thank you so much for coming out and talking to us. I always hear the value in what you have to say, and it's appreciated that you took the time to come out here. And at quarter to 10, you're still here, so thank you. But hearing the discussion, it sounds like people are talking either or. We are either talking about public transportation or we're talking about roads. And that is not where I am at. I am not talking one or the other. I am talking one first, about promises made and promises broken. The people in 2004 were given a list of projects. The Sandag said that we need this amount of money. Are you willing to tax yourselves an additional half percent, half cent, aside and above all the other taxes that you pay? Are you willing to pay this for these projects to do this? And the people overwhelmingly said, yes, let me tax myself more so that we can have these projects done that will give us this. We paid that money all these years into this, this big giant collective pot. There's one pot for the whole county, and all of us put our money in from all over the county. And all of this time, all the projects got done in San Diego, Chula Vista, South Bay. Very, very little got done in North County. Very, very little, almost nothing got done in East County. But we were told our time would come. We're going to get these projects done. Your time will come. Our time never came. So for me, first off, it is about broken promises because we still need to have roads. We can't get rid of roads. No matter how hard we try, no matter how much we wish, roads are not going anywhere, and they need to be maintained. But the second part of this that I have a lot of heartburn with is that when you look at the proposal that was given to us, and I've, I've had the proposal given to me three different times, the monies that we paid into that pot that we have watched go all down South County, it isn't just that they want to take it from the roads and put it into transit. On the face of it, I'm not particularly opposed to looking at the differences from 2004 to 2019 and what would best serve our community. My opposition particularly, now there are some subsets, but my opposition particularly is the monies that we have spent in North County, the taxes that we have paid in North County. With this plan as it's presented so far, there is still nothing in North County. They want to take the monies that we've paid from North County and put most of it back down into San Diego, Chula Vista, and the international, at the one, at the one meeting, they talked about the International Border Airport, that if we put infrastructure monies into that, it could be another San Diego airport. That gave me some heartburn as well. So my, my position is, when they're talking about this big, bold vision of hundreds and hundreds of miles of tunnels and aerial rail lines, they're talking about San Diego, Chula Vista, National City. They are not talking about North County. And when pressed on, what are you going to provide for North County? After joking about how bad and inefficient the Sprinter is, it's not accessible, super slow, and it doesn't go places people want to go, they laughed about it, they joked about it three separate times in that meeting, after that presentation, they joked about how bad the Sprinter is. But what they want to do for North County is double track the Sprinter for us. They literally want to double down on something that they admit doesn't work. That's absurd. We need to have another conversation about that. I am not opposed to public transit. I think it works great in places where it's efficient. I tried using the bus when I lived in Imperial Beach and I was going to San Diego State and wanted to take the bus to school. I didn't have a car. It took hours and hours and hours to get there. It took hours and hours and hours to get home. It was horribly inefficient. That was back in the 70s. And all these years later, they haven't fixed it. It's still inefficient and it's still slow. They haven't figured it out yet. And when we were talking Measure A, when it came out, I called them out on it right away. I talked to them about the corruption. I talked to them about the issues that Sandag has had over the years and the lack of trust with Sandag. And we were proven right on that one, it turns out sadly. So there is a little bit of a trust issue with them. And I think with the voters, if you, if you say, yes, let's take the money that we have here in North County or that we have paid all these years and that we've waited for that money to come back to us for these projects, but let's move a little bit more of it over to transit. If the voters say that, I'm okay with that. I'm, I have no problem with that. I do have a problem with the executive director saying that it only needs a majority vote of the Board of Directors of Sandag to take that money and move it somewhere else and move it into another region. I'm not okay with that. I think just as the people voted on these projects, the people should be able to vote on the new projects. And if the money is going to be diverted from those projects and/or from this region. We talk about mass transit. Right now, less than 4%, I think it's 3.6, 3.8% of the population uses mass transit. When the executive director was pressed on that, because there is no money attached to this, they talk a lot about all the projects, but they have really avoided talking money. But other experts are estimating it's going to be in the billions and billions of dollars. That amount of money is going to equate to a lot more than a half cent sales tax, which will be in addition to the half cent sales tax that we're already on the hook for, for this through 2044. And they're not, it's going to be more than half a cent. Some people are saying it could be upwards of eight cents to do what they want, which is really unrealistic to look at people going to, people are going to vote themselves that much in an additional sales tax. I don't have a, I, I don't have a problem with public transportation. I don't think anybody up here has a problem with public transportation. It needs to be efficient, it needs to be effective. I would like to see Sandag or North County Transit come up with a way to make the buses more efficient, make the rail line more efficient. The executive director was asked about the 3%, and he even admitted in his big, bold vision, if they got an increase up to 10%, that would be a lot, and he didn't think they would get it. So you're looking at billions of dollars for less than 10% of the population. That's 90% of the population that we need to still think about. We still need to think about the roads that we have. We cannot give 100% of the money to 3% of the population or even 10% of the population. We need to find a good balance and we need to find a good mix. And I, and I think that we are all open to that. And we talk about greenhouse gas emissions, and I don't know how many people in the room were living here in the 60s and 70s when we had that big thick cloud hanging over our cities with smog, and it was thick and your throat would hurt. And kids were having asthma, and, and it was horrible to live through that, especially if you drove through Riverside and LA smog just settled down there. We don't have that anymore. We have made a lot of strides over the last 40 years, 45 years, with our smog reduction and our greenhouse gas reductions. And technology is taking us farther down that road where we will have more reductions. We will be better with our electric cars, our autonomous cars, et cetera. So I think there's a good balance that we can find and we need to work toward that. My opposition to the current plan for Sandag is that it takes money from North County and diverts it from projects that were promised, and it takes that money away from North County and it diverts it to other areas of the region where none of our needs are going to be met. And I think as a representative of the people of Vista, it's incumbent upon us to fight for the needs of our community and make sure they are met, whatever those needs are and however they are identified with the community. Now, having said all that, we cannot sit here as a body and say how important it is that we be transparent and we want information from our community. I've had that presentation three times. I'm not impressed. I don't like what Sandag is proposing. It's not good for us. It's not good for the taxpayers. It's not good for our North County area. It does nothing to help with mass transit nor the roads. We want mass transit to be improved. We should demand that. We want our roads to be improved as was promised, and we voted to do that. We should demand that. I can't say here, like I did earlier, that we want to be transparent, we want the community input, and then not say, let's have Sandag come out and give us a presentation. I don't know how many of you have seen the Sandag presentation, if you've seen it online or you've gone anywhere else. But if you hear the presentation and you hear what we hear and you read what they wrote in their presentation and in their paperwork, that there is nothing here except double tracking what they already say is bad, I would ask that you stand with us and demand that we be served by Sandag and that our public transportation in North County integrates across the corridor and in the north, north and south direction. We could just keep going all night on this one because there's so much to say in the presentation when you hear it. Mr. Icarata, the executive director of Sandag, has been particularly aggressive against roads and has said he's not putting any money into roads at all. That's, that's a nonstarter because we still need to have our roads, as was pointed out. It, it provides the avenue for our goods and services. And some of our tradesmen, you know, our carpenters, our electricians, our plumbers, our landscapers, all kinds of people use the roads. You can't just get rid of them. So I, I'm not opposed to having Sandag come and listen or talk to us. I think that if you hear what we hear, you'll have the same questions and concerns. And the more information that you have, I think the better equipped you will be to support us in the opposition to the plan as it stands right now and demand better from Sandag. Because that's where I'm going to be, demanding better from Sandag to the people of North
Councilmember Green.
All right. Thank you all for speaking. It's been great to hear from the community as well. I have four kids that I love tons, and the reason I say that is we don't agree on everything all the time. And as much as I love everybody in this room, I can probably tell that we're not going to agree on this one either, so I'm going to preface it with that. I voted yes on this measure in 2004 with a, three kids, a five-year-old, a three-year-old, and a one-year-old. They're now 20, 18, 16, and I added a new 12-year-old to the mix. And in 2004, I thought that our freeways were bad. I thought that 78 was bad. I thought the infrastructure was bad. And I agreed to pay an extra half a cent so that they would fix my 78. I've been driving up and down that road ever since I got my license when I was 16 in my Ford Probe SE with dual exhaust and a really loud stereo system. But I'll tell you what, nothing has come from Sandag. And I think that's what our community needs to realize is that the board down in Sandag is South San Diego heavy. All of the votes and all the money that's allocated is all allocated for South San Diego. When Sandag came down here and presented last, I tore into them and I explained to them the amount of tax money that North County pays and what we feel our fair share of the pie is, which we haven't gotten. And again, as they were standing in front of us, they said, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. Well, guess what? Now they've come up and say, just joking, it's not coming, we're going to do something else. I really feel like it is a disservice to our voters. It's exactly why people don't like politicians. Like Councilwoman, Deputy Mayor Franklin said, I don't like to call myself a politician, but I am an elected official, therefore I'm a politician. One thing I will never do is go back on my word to my community. And as somebody who voted for this and said, hey, we have a problem with this, I see no reason to not hold Sandag's feet to the fire to make sure that this happens, in my opinion. So that's a really big thing. The other thing is, I know lots of Vistins as well, thousands and thousands of Vistins. Out of the thousands and thousands of Vistins that I know, I probably know about five that use mass transit to get to and from. And I know we're saying, hey, that's not a good excuse for not dumping tons of money into it. But knowing that over 97% of people that I know would come up to me and say, hey, Joe, we would much rather our roads be improved than you add another track to the Sprinter, for me, it's an absolute no-brainer. 66.66666% of Vista voters approved this tax and said, hey, fixing these freeways is super important. Yes, it's in 2004. I would venture to say, if Sandag brings this forward as a ballot, which I don't think they will because the board has the power, which is why it's so important we write this letter. And the reason I don't think it's premature that we write this letter is because we've seen Sandag's past performance. We've seen how they treated us in the past. We've seen that they haven't given Vista what Vista needs. And in looking at their Big Five move, we're not going to have space speed tunnels from San Diego to Civic Center Drive. That's not in their plan. There's not a high-speed rail from Vista to Carlsbad down to San Diego. There's nothing in that plan that I've seen that is going to improve your commute time, that's going to lower greenhouse emissions, that's going to reduce cardiovascular diseases and asthma and things like that. All of this stuff that they're saying, that we're saying is going to change by Sandag's Big Five plan, it's not happening for Vista. And my job is to represent Vista and to do what's best for Vista. And unfortunately, this Big Five move is not what's best for Vista. And that's what I look at things through. What lens am I looking at this through? It's not a Republican or a Democrat lens. I'm a no-party preference guy, okay? But I'll tell you what, I'm a Vista guy, and I do think that this Transnet, you know, thing that we voted on is what's best for Vista, especially in contrast with what they've put up for us to see, which is just a great idea. And there's a lot of great ideas out there, but if you can't fund the idea, then why are we messing around with it? We already have plans in place to improve our infrastructure that voters have voted on, that I believe we do have the money to accomplish. According to the supervisor, our repairs are about 2.2 billion. There's $22 billion there. There's more money coming in, and we can get more matching funds. We're going to have a much better shot of fixing our roads and our freeway here than we are putting some overhead lines and tunnels to Coronado and things like that because that is going to require, again, another huge tax, which I won't vote for because that's not going to affect Vista. So I do appreciate the mayor's letter with this, and I am going to support the letter. And I do think that Sandag does need to come down here and present. I want you all to see, I want you to see the questions I asked. If you came here at Sandag's last meeting, you would have seen how we all stood to Sandag and said, what are you doing for Vista? And their answer was basically, nothing, but it's on the way. And when I see this proposal, it's not on the way. Unfortunately, Mrs. Lees, I can't read your file. I would second Mrs. Contreras' motion, however, I'd be voting against it so it wouldn't do me any good. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Contreras.
I, I just want to point something out that's in black and white in the ballot language, and even though it's in black and white, it could still be, I guess, argued. But it says, "To relieve traffic congestion, improve safety, and match state and federal funds by," and it has the whole list of projects, "shall San Diego County voters continue the existing half-cent transportation sales tax for 40 years." And this is the part that I want to highlight, "including creating an independent taxpayer oversight committee to conduct yearly audits, ensuring voter mandates are met." And so I think when we're talking about the ballot measure and the ballot language, the mechanism for oversight is embedded in the ballot measure as the independent taxpayer oversight committee. And that oversight committee, so if you look at sdforward.com, I'm going to read a paragraph, "Transportation technology is evolving and changing how we travel daily. Embracing these innovations, the big, the five big moves unveiled at a joint meeting of Sandag, Board of Directors, Policy Advisory Committees, and Independent Taxpayer Oversight Committee are key strategies that will enhance connectivity, increase safety and sustainability, and improve quality of life." The 2021 regional The 2021 regional plan will synchronize the five big moves to deliver a fully-integrated, world-class transportation system for the San Diego region." Now, when we're looking at the IOT, the ITOC, so this independent taxpayer oversight committee, which is listed in black and white on this ballot measure, so we did vote for an oversight committee...
There is, there is an oversight committee that sees that and reports to us.
Yes, we did. And so, and I'm reading from Sandag now, when we're looking at the committees, "Part of the ITOC's success relies on the continued feedback from the public. Building and maintaining open dialogue is a critical element of the future of San Diego's transportation system, one that offers viable choices and alternatives to travelers." And so, this independent taxpayer oversight committee also has the ability to tell us that we are not going to be able to move forward and fund all of these promises. So how can we better have accountability for our taxpayer money that we have? So I just wanted to put that out there, because there is a mechanism that was voted on that is clearly on this ballot. And so I don't want to pretend like we don't, there's not a mechanism that allows us to review the taxpayer money and how to better use it in the future, because we don't have a viable plan to use this taxpayer money to expand, keep expanding freeways, when we know that that's not a viable solution. It's wasted money if we continue to expand and expand. And that's why my opposition to the letter is that it doesn't take into account the reality. It's just complaining about the 78, and it doesn't address the reality of the situation that the plan is just not a good plan. And like I said before, you know, I wish that a letter would be drafted that takes into account how terrible the 78 is, and how it can be seen as a short-term solution, right, to add an HOV lane. And maybe that's a compromise in this vision, but it doesn't take into account how we're going to have a viable plan that fits within the regulations that are put on this plan. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Rigby.
So I do know that Councilwoman Contreras put a motion on the floor, and my understanding is that it has not been seconded yet. Is that correct? I would substitute a motion, or second a motion if the mayor is putting forth her letter, moving that we send the letter. I agree with the letter. I, I'm not opposed to transit. Nobody, nobody here is. I'm just opposed to this blanket proposal, the way that it's been presented, and with the executive director not wanting to have a discussion on it. I think the mayor's letter says forth the position from the city. I still think it's fine to have Sandag come and present to us. If they change their proposal, if they add to it, take away from it, if they identify projects with the monies that we've already paid and would pay into this new tax that they're going to put on the ballot, they want to put another tax on the ballot. And I'm not going to vote for a tax that we're not going to see anything for. That's just absurd. So I agree with the verbiage of the letter. I think it's strongly stated, the position here, and I agree with sending it, but I'm not opposed to having Sandag come up and present to us and talk to us. And our position, or my position, I can't speak for my colleagues, my position could change. We'd have to hold their feet to the fire. I'm not hopeful, having had presentations and had discussions with Sandag staff and with Mr. Icarata himself. He's already had two different times where he was talking both sides of his mouth at the same time, and I have an issue with that. That's a huge trust issue for me. And I don't think I am a politician. I think that's an earned moniker, and I hope and pray I have not earned that yet, ever. So I, if you've moved that we send your letter...
I'll move...
I would second that motion, but go ahead and ask Sandag to come and present, and we would have a lot of notice to the community that they are here, because I think you guys should hear what we heard. I have no problem with that.
Deputy Mayor.
I agree with you. Once the, once they're ready to make an actual proposal, and not just five bullet points, I'm ready to vote. I was gonna, I was gonna offer a motion to approve the letter as a resolution of the city council, and I was gonna ask if the mayor would not mind those of us who want to add our signatures and names to it, if she wouldn't mind if we sign on with her.
I would love to have your signatures on it.
Great.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Actually, okay. Are we done? Your motion included having Sandag present, so, so is her motion.
No.
You want this presentation?
Do we know? Well, and we don't, I know the answer to my own question. We don't know when they're going to have an actual presentation. They're very premature on this, just going around the county, talking about all the billions and billions of dollars that they're going to spend on hundreds of miles of tunnels and aerial railways that will never reach North County. None of what they're proposing to do will make their way to North County, and it won't integrate us. So however you guys want the presentation to go, I'm, I'm okay.
Would you be okay with a clean motion that doesn't yet address the presentation, and then we could direct staff that, when there's a fully-formed proposal, that they could bring it back? I want to hear the proposal when they have it, but I've also received the bullet point presentation, and, yeah, I didn't feel the need to go through it again. But when there is a, you know, when they came in before, they had a hard, when for Measure 8, they had a hard plan. X amount was going to, you know, roads, X amount was going to local roads, X amount for highway infrastructure, X amount for buses and trains, X amount for, you know, staff salaries. When they get to the point where they know how they want to spend this money, I would love to hear that. But, you know, coming up with a, you know, a shiny whiz-bang, you know, a shiny object, you know, yeah, I, when they have an actual proposal, I'd like to hear it.
I'm fine with that.
Councilmember Green.
Just for clarification purposes, I definitely want to support the motion to send the letter in right now and say what's up, but I think what our community is asking for is the presentation everybody else is getting, that they're getting like next week. They have a presentation ready, obviously. So that's kind of what I was thinking your motion was, is, hey, if you guys want to see the presentation everybody else is seeing, we'll have staff work on getting that here as soon as possible so you can all see it, but we're sending this letter in right now. And that's kind of where I was at with the motion is...
The presentation that everybody else is getting is the presentation that we got before...
Yeah, exactly. And that's what I'm saying, if they want to see it, let them see it.
Last week at the Regional Energy Working Group...
Yeah.
And that they have been giving to all of the subgroups. So there is no substance to it, except hundreds and hundreds of miles of aerial...
Yeah, and all I was saying is, that's the one I want them to...
Three of us serve on Sandag here, so we...
Yeah, and I haven't seen that presentation. Actually, I've only read the website, so like, that's, I mean, I'm just saying, if you're okay with that, that'd be awesome.
That's the only presentation they have, and I'm fine with that. And I think that once they do it, once they, if they put meat into it...
Then we'll hear it again.
Then we'll hear it again.
Yeah, but maybe for now, we'll see if staff can get them out here as soon as possible for the community, but let's send the letter now.
Can we just set up as a workshop or something?
Exactly. Yep, sounds good.
Yeah.
All right. So can we just vote?
Yeah, vote.
And go home sometime, to our families? That motion passes four to one. With that, do we have any oral communications? We have oral communications. We have one, okay.
Hello, City Council. I wanted to talk about an earlier subject, which was like the budget. Councilmembers Franklin and Rigby spent a lot of time talking about the need to sort of be aware of our budget and look for opportunities to cut costs at every page, you know, scanning the entire document for opportunities to cut cost. And there were two presented tonight by Councilmember Contreras, one being to reduce cost on graffiti. I guess we're paying $100,000 to two people to just paint different shades of beige. So that's an interesting opportunity. An even huger opportunity would be for the city to embrace community choice energy. And with respect to looking at the future fiscal responsibility of the city, I would like to get a little more feedback and thoughts for Councilmembers Franklin and Rigby on those two cost-cutting subjects. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of our speakers. They have remarks, starting with Councilmember Contreras.
We don't always agree, but I think we still have a good time. So I appreciate the spirited discussion. Obviously, I wish it would have gone differently, but, you know, thank you so much for everybody's thoughts, and hopefully people have prayers for us in the future, because I don't know how we're going to create a good system for our people to move around with the, with the direction that we're going, so. Oh, and also Strawberry Festival was super awesome, and we were blessed to have that window of no rain that coincided almost perfectly with the beginning and end of the Strawberry Festival. So I don't know if we made a motion for that and it carried unanimously, but it worked out really well in our favor.
Councilmember Green.
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight, everybody for speaking, and everybody for having something mean something to you, and you actually take action on it. I know, like I say, we're not going to agree all the time, but we're definitely going to work through it and try to make what we think is best for Vista happen. So thank you all so much, and I hope that you have a great couple weeks.
Deputy Mayor.
I just want to share a fun meteorological fact. There were the same number of tornadoes to this point in the year in 1980 as this year. So, you know, history repeats itself, doesn't it?
Councilmember Rigby.
I just want to say thank you for still being here, and for listening, and for participating. And Matt, if you want to stay for a couple of minutes, I'm happy to answer your questions. Thank you to staff for all the work that you do for us. I'm sure it can't be easy dealing with all of us sometimes, but I appreciate all the time and the energy and the effort that you put in for our community. It's greatly appreciated. And Councilwoman Contreras, I do pray for us. I pray for us every day. I pray not just for the council, but I pray for the city. And sometimes my prayers are answered, and sometimes I'm still waiting. I don't ever take it as a no. I'm just waiting. And we do have good discussions up here, and we don't always agree on things, and it's, it's, might be a difference of ideology, might be a difference of the mind, but it's never a difference of the heart. We all have a heart for our community. We all have a passion for who we are and who you are in the best way that we can serve you. And I would second the motion from the gentleman speaker earlier to give Sam a job implementing Sandag up here. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay, so I want to thank Public Works for all the hard work they did in cleaning up the city before the Strawberry Festival. They went around and cleaned up. Yeah, they are, they're probably home in bed, but I want to thank you, because they'll be up early tomorrow. So, and thank you to Vista Chamber for organizing another successful Strawberry Festival on Sunday. The event draws thousands across the region, and it's a great opportunity to showcase our downtown. So, and it was all cleaned up and spiffy for that, so, anyway. And tomorrow is National Senior Health and Fitness Day tomorrow, and May 29th, and start the day off at nine, and you can walk with me through Bringle Terrace Park, and then head to McClellan Resource Center for free health screenings, community resources, exercise demonstrations, and lunch. So I'll be there at nine to walk Bringle Terrace that hill. It's going to be fun at nine in the morning. And one last thing, readers of all ages can participate in a summer reading challenge at the Vista Library beginning June 1st, which is coming right up. The more you read, the more prizes you'll receive, and you can register online at san diego-publiclibrary. And that might be a dot com or something, huh? It doesn't say it. Okay. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. Next Tuesday, June 4th, we are going to have our Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness Workshop, and that'll be here in the council chambers at 5:30 PM. So encourage people to come out for that. And then the other item is the city's annual document shredding event is Saturday, June 8th, and that'll take place from nine to noon here at the Civic Center in the public parking lot at Alta Vista. And it's sponsored by Edco, and residents can come and bring two banker boxes full of items to shred, and they'll take care of it on-site for you. And if you want more information, you go to cityvista.com.
It's in our parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay. City Attorney, anything?
Nothing further to add tonight.
About our city clerk, Assistant City Clerk? Nope, not on it. Okay, so we adjourned tonight's meeting to honor the memory of longtime Vista resident Sergeant Major Joseph J. Parker, who passed away on May 24th. He served 35 years in the Marine Corps. He volunteered with the Vista Sheriff's Senior Patrol and the city's Code Enforcement Department. And he and his wife, Ann, established a program to place American flags throughout downtown on Veterans Day and Memorial Day. He was 101 years old, and so he passed away on May 24th. And so we're, we're going to adjourn tonight in the honor of his, him at 10:18. Good evening, everyone.